Give it one more minute here and we'll go ahead and get started.
Are we going to show our faces for the retreat?
I'm gonna turn, I'm gonna turn mine on in a second.
I don't want to stand out, stick out like a sore thumb.
Okay, so it's 1:05, I'm gonna go ahead and get us started here. Okay, am I all good to get started? I figured I should ask the clerk's office.
We're good on our end if our host is ready.
Tempe 11, all good?
Host is ready.
All right, sounds good, perfect. All right, so let's go ahead and call the Tempe City Council's special meeting to order. It is Friday, September 10th, the time is now 1:05 PM. Due to concerns over COVID-19 exposure, the city has implemented measures to protect our community, including limiting public attendance to electronic means only. Members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco Webex events or by visiting tempe.gov/clerk for more information. This is actually the first city council retreat for 2021. The purpose of this retreat is for the council to review and discuss certain agenda items at a little bit more of a casual format. Members of the public are of course invited to attend the meeting virtually and listen in to discussions. The first item on the agenda is a presentation on process, rules, and procedure, which will be the first section of this retreat. I'm gonna go ahead and ask Keely Barvell to our Chief of Staff for Mayor and Council for an introduction. Keely.
Hello, hi, sorry, I was expecting you to change the, Mr. Count, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna take another issue first, so let me just get that up quickly here. My apologies on that. Oh, there we are, okay, I have to share my screen. Oh darn, let's see here, there we are, okay. Process rules and procedures, there we are. So sorry about that, I just was expecting, can you all see my screen now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Let me just get over to, so for my, on the first topic here, I actually, sorry about that, so item one on your agenda is a discussion of a number of process and procedural issues that the staff seeks some clarification or direction on. You have in your packet a draft of the council rules with some proposed changes noted on items we anticipated wouldn't spur much discussion, and we will be taking notes of all the discussion today and revising this draft to reflect the consensus on those issues. We'll likely be adding more changes. We will have a new draft of that rules change document ready for council consideration and action at the October regular council meeting, and it will take a two-thirds vote to approve the rules changes. Judy Baumann and Elizabeth Higgins from the City Attorney's Office are here with us to help answer questions and make sure we get all the drafting of the rules changes done right. So with that, we'll go to the first item under this, item 1A, non-binding resolutions. Yep, so sorry. This actually was an issue that was raised by a council member and a request that this be discussed during this meeting to clarify the parameters of when non-binding resolutions would be used. As I mentioned before, Judy is here to help answer any questions or give information about the procedural ways to accomplish any changes you all decide you want to make, and with that, I will turn it over to council discussion. So staff does not have any specific recommendations about this at this time. We just wanted to give you a chance to, to talk about it since a member had requested that we do so.
Sounds good, Keely, thank you. I guess I'll kick it off a little bit on this end. I, I think one of the reasons I believe this was raised and I had talked to a couple of council members about this was primarily about kind of the use of non-binding resolutions, and I think that it's because there was some conversation around, you know, how much do we want to wade into state and federal issues? And how much do we want to simply keep on agenda items for council meetings specifically related to things that we can directly control and that are truly matters of local control? I, I think the other thing is, and once again, the, the term here, non-binding, I think is also extremely important. From my perspective, you know, when I was sort of thinking about this in advance of the meeting, you know, my thought was that we would probably seek to limit the use of non-binding resolutions moving forward because I feel like there are other ways for us to continue to get our points across on certain things, and I think we could even get them across in a more timely fashion. You know, I don't, I think, Keely, our next regular council meeting isn't set until October 23rd or 24th, and so if there's some kind of issue that people really want us to move on in external group or even a member of the public, we couldn't get that item on the agenda unless we called a special meeting for that one item for about probably six, seven weeks from now. But there have been a couple of instances over the last few months where we've been, you know, requested to kind of weigh in on certain things, and we've actually chosen many times to submit letters. I've submitted a couple of letters in support of both state and federal issues to our congressional delegation and on behalf of groups that have reached out to me asking for support from the mayor's office. I know the council's also been asked many times to also weigh in on certain things, and in the past, you know, when I spoke to the city attorney and she can check me if I'm wrong, but you know, she even said to me, you know, and the, do we, I asked her, do we have to have a work-study meeting for some of these things to discuss a non-binding resolution? Or perhaps the council signing onto a letter? And she's more or less told me that as long as it's not an issue that's going to come before the council for an up or down vote and not really a matter that would be in front of us, having Keely as our Chief of Staff circulating a letter that council members could make a decision to sign on to would really have the same effect as a non-binding resolution. And also, when I've had conversations with some of the groups that have approached me about this, one of the things that they've said to me as well is, you know, from our perspective, Corey, a, a non-binding, a, a letter on official letterhead from yourself or from members of the city council is basically equivalent to a non-binding resolution. And of course, council members do not lose their ability to practice free speech and to advocate for issues that are important to them. Yesterday, I was part of an affordable housing press conference. Before that, I was part of a, a press conference about electric vehicles with council member QB. Clearly not an event the whole council was at, but something that I know was deeply important to me, and I wanted to make sure that I was present for. So, you know, so with that, that's sort of my perspective in thinking about this issue in the run-up to the meeting. And so my perspective would be, we could go more towards the kind of official letter format, which I think would be quicker and would frankly be the same as opposed to the use of the non-binding resolution. But with that said, I'm gonna open this up, whatever, and talk to council and see what we think. And the firsthand I see is council member Arredondo Savage.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. I, just a couple of things, I just want to relay my thoughts and just appreciation for you for giving us the opportunity to, to have this conversation because I think it's really important, and I, I think one of the things that I've learned being on the council is sometimes we have a tendency to do the non-binding resolutions, you know, maybe a little bit more loose than, than I, I guess I would like to see because I, first and foremost, I really would love for us to utilize those nine binding resolutions for things that we can really impact in the business. I think you've said everything pretty, pretty well, Mayor, so I like to think that you kind of stole my thunder here a little bit. But I really do truly believe that when we, we talk about these nine non-binding resolutions, those are actually things that impact our Tempe community that are things that we can take, that we can take action on and things that we have control over. So, I think, I think that's a, about what I'm thinking is, is when we do a non-binding resolution, that we do it for the right reasons, and then it does become, you know, more impactful and more powerful. And I don't have a problem with at all letting council speak up and say what it is that they want. I like your idea, Mayor, of going the letter route, the letter of support, whether we do it individually or we, I know in the past have done it the way that we all sign on, or it's, you know, it's definitely our, our choice, our decision, and definitely never want to limit anybody's First Amendment rights. I think that's really important to do that, and that process seems a little bit quicker and a little bit smoother. So I certainly support that thought and idea. And, and I too do agree that I think it would be nice if we really are just cautious with the way we do our non-binding resolution and just think about it. We try to keep them really nonpartisan, we focus on what's, what's good for Tempe, and we don't really try to get too, too involved in things that are outside of our local control. So I appreciate, you know, just us having that dialogue and giving that, and hopefully just really being cautious as we move forward and thoughtful when we do put forth these, these resolutions. So, thank you for that, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Any other council members wishing to speak on this item?
I'd like to speak.
Yes, Councilmember QB.
So to me, it's contextual. I remember having this discussion when I, I introduced a resolution about uranium mining in the Grand Canyon watershed. And I remember Councilmember Granville at the time said, this has nothing to do with Tempe, so you know, I'm not gonna support it. But I made the point, and I wasn't successful, but I made the point that, if this is also, if this issue is, first of all, the Grand Canyon belongs, belongs to the entire state. I made that point. They also made the point that the tribal communities, including the southern tribes, including tribes, the SRP, MIC, and GRIK, this was very important to them, and they had a letter of support. So it was to really align and support our tribal partners as well, which has a direct impact on Tempe. So, you know, you could argue that that has nothing to do with uranium mining, has nothing to do with Tempe, but you could also argue that there really is a connection, that there's a lot of interconnectedness, especially with environmental issues, because, you know, pollution doesn't really have a, have a border, you know? So to me, it's contextual, and I can see where letters can be more, the reason why I sometimes support letters over resolutions, and I tell stakeholders that is because it can be done more quickly, right? You don't have to get it on the agenda, and it's maybe less work for staff to have to do all the whereas statements. But there are times where resolutions are, are necessary and are needed. One of those moments, I think, is when we had, you know, the, the pullout from the Paris Accords, right? And cities all over America were passing resolutions and joining, you know, signing up as council members, signing up the cities to say, we're still in, you know, they made a strong point. I would hate to, to say like, we're never gonna do this. I mean, I think it could be used judiciously, but I think sometimes one person's idea of what is germane to the city is not another person's idea. And I, I give the example of, of the uranium mining, it was so important to our tribal partners. So I'm just trying to introduce a little nuance here, I don't think it's like a black and white issue. I think letters generally are more efficient, you can get them done more quickly. But there are times where partners come to us and saying, we're getting resolutions from, you know, three or four or five other cities in Arizona, and we really like you to move along, and that we shouldn't have, say, no, we can't do that, it's not, it's not in our process. I mean, I think sometimes we have to handle things in a situational way.
Excellent, thank you, Councilmember QB. Let me go to Councilmember Navarro.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. No, I, I respectfully probably disagree with, with Councilmember QB on this one. I do understand that there are some tentacles that do get to the city of Tempe. It's, it's, we had to deal with the border wall, we wanted to sign on with that, and, and I had, you know, although my personal belief could be one way or the other with the wall, I didn't want to make it a Tempe issue. I think these things have to be vetted for sure. I think that if we continually use the, the, a letter to, of support or anything kind of frivolously, just like on every little thing, we're washing our meaning out, and we're actually, you know, possibly washing our, our perspectives of a lot of residents out that we, that we, you know, basically represent. So I, I think cautiously, you know, we use, we use these letters when needed, but I think specifically, they have to have some impact on Tempe. I don't know if some extra, you know, you know, whatever backdoor, not backdoor, whatever words I'm trying to use, but just these other extra fingers of, of, they do touch Tempe in certain ways. Yes, I'm sure a lot of everything does, but what truly has an impact? I think we have to be just cautious of those things. So I just think that they have to be used very sparingly and making sure that it has an impact on our residents.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro, I'm gonna next go to Vice Mayor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I don't have strong feelings one way or the other on this. And I do tend to lean towards Councilmember QB's point of view on this one. I mean, we have had some resolutions in the past, non-binding resolutions, but we always have the option to vote against those resolutions if we feel they don't impact Tempe, just like the example Councilmember QB pointed out with, with, you know, former Councilmember Granville. So I get that sometimes it may put some council members in a tricky position. I've certainly been put in a position by, by them in the past, but it's not like they're coming up all the time. So, from my perspective, I, you know, I kind of think that, like, if this was happening a lot and it was every single issue, if we were weighing in on, you know, Afghanistan and COVID response and things like that, then yeah, you know, that would be, that'd be quite tiresome. But since, I think it's only come up two or three times in my five, five and a half years on council, if even three. So I think from my perspective, it's kind of if it ain't broke, don't fix it approach. So that's where I'm at, thank you.
Thank you, Vice, Vice Mayor Keating, appreciate it. Let me next go to Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Hey, thank you, Mayor, and you know, I reappreciate everybody's perspective, and I, I think it's kind of just like, you know, Councilmember QB said, everybody's gonna have different thoughts and opinions of what's relevant to Tempe and what's not. My, my thought process is a little bit about the fact that if we have an organization, whether they're located in Tempe, part of Tempe, whatever it may be, I get that, that, that's impactful to Tempe, but is it, is it a Tempe issue that we can really touch, that we have control over, that we can take action on? And so my thought process was kind of along, you know, Councilmember Navarro's thoughts is, I just really want to make sure that when we do use these non-binding resolutions, that, you know, they're very impactful to Tempe, and they're not contentious like when we talked about the border wall or their uranium, uranium, which, you know, we don't really have any control over at all. So I, I really just want to keep the resolutions about Tempe and keeping Tempe first, or residents first, or community first, and making sure it's something that, you know, that we have control over, something that we can take action on, and it is not divisive. So, you know, just my two cents, I, I certainly respect the idea of being able to do those letters. I like that idea, I'm totally fine with that, and I think it's just as impactful. And, and I, I hear what the Vice Mayor is saying too, but I think in my lifetime here on the city, we've done quite a few instances where we've done some, some things that may be questionable. I would just like us to just be very cautious and just think about it and, and the impact that we may be losing if we do do them too frequently and we're really not able to follow that up with any action. So just, just my two cents, I just, I, I appreciate everybody taking the time to think about it and voice their, their opinions and their thoughts. I, I just think it's important to, you know, we work really hard to do what's right for this community. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage, let me next go to Councilmember Garland.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. So I have, I mean, for me, first thing I was thinking of when everybody is talking is what is the problem that we're trying to solve? Was there a problem with this issue in the past? Or is it, are we just trying to look at making changes just to make changes? Because I, I see, I can see both sides of this, but I, you know, the different discussions, but I, I tend to, to understand with Councilmember Arredondo Savage a bit more. It's like, I would rather see us bring something that's going to take time from our council meetings that we would be sitting in to discuss and the non-binding resolutions that would take time from other things that we could be focusing on for those specifically directly to the city. But I wouldn't want us to stop sending the letters if we were, if those were still an option for certain issues. I would like then, maybe it's, maybe it's that if an issue comes up and somebody wants us to do, you know, some type of resolution or a letter that it, all the council members know about it, and we can say, yes, we'll sign on to a letter, or, you know, this was, this is a biggie, we should probably take this one to council discussion. I'm gonna just think that I don't know what the problem we're trying to solve, so I'm not sure how I can help in this discussion. But as a new council member, I would tend to go more, let's just focus on the city of Tempe. So, thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Garland. Any other council members, any comments? Thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, I would just sort of sum up, I mean, you think about this, uranium mining, because people spoke up and, and cities and towns, they, they stopped uranium mining in the Grand Canyon. Congress passed a resolution, right? And that impacts our tribal communities, and so that's example that some may not see as a Tempe issue, but if it affects our tribes and affects our state and the largest, you know, tourist site in the state, that could be impactful. I don't mean to get blabbered at, but it, it doesn't mean that each resolution has to have a lot of discussion. We, we have very little discussion, a lot of our resolutions that we put forward on council. And like Vice Mayor Keating was saying, you can vote it up or vote it down, and it doesn't happen that often. So why stop the process if there's a, we don't want to have to tell, maybe there's some important resolution that we do want to consider, it's like, oh, we can't, we decided our process, we'll have to wait to the next retreat and see if we can introduce it. I mean, if, if you talk about searching for, you know, a solution in search of a problem, or a problem in search of a solution, I mean, it really isn't a problem, it comes up pretty rarely, but why not just leave that, that valve there? And ultimately, you have to get four people to vote for it, right? And if four people want to vote for it, then probably will be related to Tempe and something that people want.
Sounds good, thank you, Councilmember QB. Let me go to Councilmember Adams.
Mr. Mayor, yes, I agree with Vice Mayor Keating and Councilmember QB on this issue. I think that I don't want us to be painted into a box where we can't do resolutions when we, when we need to, and what one person may think only affects Tempe, others might not. And I think the example of the uranium mine is a good one. So I just, I don't want us to limit our options, so I'm going to go with that, with that take on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams, Councilmember Garland.
Hi, so, Councilmember Adams brings up a, a good point. So I, question is, are, so are we bringing this to us, to the discussion right now? Because we want to remove non-binding resolutions? Or is it just to discuss what they, how we use them?
I think that, I think that sort of at this point, Councilmember Garland, I think that kind of all options were on the table about how we would choose to handle this issue. But I, I think from what I'm hearing, and I mean, obviously, someone can, you know, can check me if I'm wrong, I, I think the perspective would be, you know, maybe, you know, we will, we will keep the, the practice, whatever, of non-binding resolutions on the table if council wants to use those. But at the same time, I think there's obviously been a lot of, because I understand council members saying, look, we don't want to completely remove this from possibility if there's something that comes up that really is of serious interest to Tempe or of serious interest to a council member. But at the same time, that we need to make sure that we're using them kind of judiciously and sparingly. Because, you know, they can be, you know, they can be controversial. We have no shortage of issues to argue over that are actually very strictly Tempe issues. And I understand the concern about not wanting us to fracture over things that frankly are a little bit further away when it comes to state or federal issues. But it sounds like, you know, council members are saying like, let's leave this as an, as an option that we can actually use in certain situations, but let's be kind of judicious and only use them sparingly. And perhaps what I might be able to say as well is that, you know, typically, you know, we do use sort of the informal practice here of either I get to put things on the agenda or two council members have to come to me to request something. And so maybe that's how we keep it as well. If we're gonna do these things, you would at least need to have the support of another council member to put something on the agenda, which is pretty much our practice with everything else, whether it be work-study or regular council meeting. But let me go to Councilmember Arredondo Savage and get her thoughts.
Mayor, and no, my, I, I just want to be clear, and I hope I didn't come across that I didn't think. I apologize, it was just more about the latter, what you meant, just use the impact that we're able to have. And, and really, that was all. If we could just at least be cautious and conscious about our decisions when we move forward with what we do, do resolutions for, and when we don't, I, I mean, I think that's all we can ask for. So that was just, I just want to make sure I got that, that good, that connection good. Hopefully that's okay, thank you, Mayor.
Sounds good, thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Councilmember Garland.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. So, okay, I understand the discussion and why this is here now. At the beginning, I didn't quite, I thought we were just discussing it. So, you know, I, I would not, would, I would not like to see this removed so that we couldn't use it, but I would, as Councilmember Arredondo Savage said, you know, be very respectful of it and how we use it, but I would not want to see that removed, so I just wanted to make sure I got that clear, so thank you.
Sounds good, thank you, Councilmember Garland. So is the council, just kind of going back, is the council generally okay, I guess, with my synopsis here that we would, you know, once again, keep the, keep non-binding resolutions as an option, but obviously kind of use them sparingly? And then obviously, we would, we would try to make sure that for the most part, when we're using them, that we would try to lean a little bit more so on issues that are kind of specifically directly pertaining to Tempe, that would be matters that we could directly impact. But also kind of the same thing, that we, when we have items that council members suggest for agendas, typically whether it's executive session, work-study, regular council meeting, that there typically have to be at least two council members who want something on the agenda. And obviously, I, and I think all of you know, I have never stopped anything from being on agenda if, if two council members have asked for it. So if that's okay with everyone, then we probably have direction to, to move forward as is.
I'm good with that, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland.
Sounds good.
Great, thank you, Councilmember QB.
Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Okay, sounds good, well, we, it looks like we've got consensus to move forward on that item. Thank you, once again, good discussion to kick things off, really appreciate it. Next up, I guess, Keely, we're gonna go back to you for item 1B, public comment at city council meetings.
Yeah, you are, and I'm trying to get, oh, got my video started, so that's helpful. I'm having some issues with my, my.
Like a video about this, but you have a video about public comment?
So yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we'll go to, next slide is item one, oops, sorry, I went backwards. One is 1B, which I'm gonna ask the city clerk Carla Reese to take the lead on. And it's giving you some background on the issue of the public comment at council meetings and the proposed changes to the rules on this topic. And I'm sorry, I'm gonna go backwards on my, there you go. So this is the issue of public comment at council meetings and the changes to the rules that are needed in order to maybe change when that, how that happens on the agenda. So Carla?
Mayor and council, this is an issue that arose out of our equity in action communications with our community members. They had requested this as a possible change for council consider. They believe it offers a courtesy to the members of our public who have general comment to not to have to sit through our entire business meeting and speak at the beginning. They feel it's more meaningful and more engaging for them since it's not the last item when everyone's ready and the business is done and everyone just wants to leave. They do understand that most cities who do have public comment at the beginning of a regular council meeting do aggregate, have an aggregate time limit. Some of those cities are 15 minutes, which may not be enough for Tempe. Some are 30 minutes, like Tucson and Phoenix, others have up to 60 minutes. That's something for council to consider. But this, again, is something coming forward through our equity in action and community member requests.
Sounds good, thank you, Carla. Keely, anything else, or should we just start the council discussion?
I'll just start the council discussion, and, and like I said, Elizabeth and Judy are here if you want some specific direction or options around what rules changes are needed to address what you want to accomplish.
All right, game, game on then. I, I guess, you know, my perspective would be, I, I would actually, now, this might sound weird, but I'd actually like to have the public comment at the beginning and the end of, of the agenda. I think in the beginning, I agree with you, sometimes the challenge of, of people coming to council meetings is that, you know, we have meetings that sometimes can go a long ways into the evening, 10:30, 11 o'clock at night. You've got sometimes very contentious public hearings typically about zoning cases and sometimes some neighborhood issues. And I feel bad about making someone sit in the audience for four or five hours while we debate issues or while people come up to speak about one specific issue. At the same time, though, I'm also, I'm also mindful of the fact that, you know, we start our regular council meetings at 6 o'clock, and you have some people who have work schedules. Not everyone works an eight-to-five job. And I want to make sure that we have ways that people are not saying, well, if I can't physically be in the council chambers at the point that we actually show up to, we are having in-person meetings again, that I somehow have missed my window because I might work a job that doesn't, has slightly more irregular hours. So I also want to make sure if we move things up to the front of the meeting that we're not disenfranchising people on the back end. So I would say this, I, I am comfortable with doing public comment in the beginning and in the end. We kind of already do that when it comes to work-study, where we have stuff for committee of the whole and issue review session items. But at the same time, if council only wants to go with public comment in one section, I would actually prefer for it to be moved to the front and not to the back. Because I just feel like it's better not to make people wait. I think about if people have children or families, and they shouldn't be sitting in our chambers till 11 o'clock at night while we continue to debate. So that's my perspective, but let me go to Vice Mayor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my preference would be at the beginning of the meeting as well, and I'm perfectly fine with the longer time limit of, you know, 60 minutes. I think the amount of engagement we get at our meetings that, that warrants, you know, more than 15 minutes or 30 minutes like some other cities do. As far as having it at the beginning and the end. As far as having it at the beginning and the end, I'm generally okay with that. My concern would be someone speaking on the same topic in both. It's so they'd come in and say, look, don't approve this project, you bunch of jerks. And we approved the project and they come back and say, I told you guys, you were jerks and you approved the project anyway. And like, I don't need to be called a jerk twice in the same meeting by the same person anyway. So that would be my only concern is that if we said, look, if you want to speak on item, you know, 6, 6A, you know, you can do it at the beginning or the end, but you can't do both. And we actually stuck to that too, because we know those residents that we all know and we have a relationship with. Oh, yeah, you know, so and so wants to tell us they even they like the vote, right? I mean, we got to be respectful of our time and staff's time as well. So as long as that was enforced with extreme fidelity, I'd be okay with that. But otherwise, my, I think my initial preference would just be, let's just have a 60-minute window at the beginning of the meetings. And if people can't make it there, they can always submit cards online. You know, we have that option. They can call in things like that. So that'd be my preference. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. And yes, you brought up a very good point that I forgot to mention too. I agree that people should not be able to double up. You should, if a person comes in to speak at the beginning of the meeting, they shouldn't be then able to speak at the end of the meeting as well. I think you get one bite at the apple for the evening and you get your your three or your five minutes and that's it. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Let me next go to Councilmember Garland.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I agree about having it at the beginning and at the end and giving somebody the option to pick one or the other. And as Randy had said, sticking to that, you know, you want to being able to have somebody. Or if we only did it at the beginning, I have been at meetings where somebody has come in and they're super fired up about an issue. And they're at the beginning of the meeting, they all fired up, but they during the meeting, the decision was really super easy and there was no reason for them to get fired up. So we should be able to give people the option of getting fired up at the beginning or getting fired up or, you know, changing their speech at the end. But I think, again, I think it's better to give people and our residents more opportunity to address us in one or than less. I just think the more we hear from our residents, the better we are. So thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Next up, Councilmember Adams.
Mayor, yes, I would really like the idea of the in the beginning and in the end, because of what you said, Mr. Mayor, about, you know, sometimes people have to work late and and then the people, I don't want people to have to go through some of those meetings at the, you know, just to wait to speak at the end. I think we've lost a lot of speakers down the over the years that couldn't take it anymore and had and left the meetings. And so I just, you know, I think the before and and later times really promote inclusivity. And I'm completely supportive of that. And it really does give everyone the opportunity to speak. So I'm supporting your your idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Let me go to Councilmember Navarro.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, yeah, I could, you know, more options is, I mean, it's, listen, I mean, I think we're all tired. Stay in late nights and get bombarded, but it's the same time we represent our citizens. And, you know, if if a beginning and an option is somewhat manageable, then then I'm for it. I would probably also say then I would say if their options are at the beginning or at the end, then I might even suggest that formal council meetings can start earlier, maybe 4 o'clock, 4:30, something like that. Because they do have the option at the beginning or end, not knowing everybody's schedule. Everyone's going to have a unique schedule. Everyone could have a different day off. You know, I don't know how you pinpoint really saying that. I know there's there's councils that have council meetings in the morning, you know, and and day 2 o'clock for Phoenix. So every city is kind of, you know, trying to understand that, yes, they do have citizens. I think the citizens that do have an issue and or want to make time, they will make time to present their issue. But in this case, how we're structured, I would probably say, if we can, let's try to move our meetings up a little bit earlier on the formal. Whatever time that looks like, I say 4 o'clock or 4:30 for that, I would be supportive of. In addition to that, I know that Phoenix does a timeline like we do and a lot of other cities do. But they actually have a, like a, I don't know, it's a, it's a, it's a deal with the mic that warns the person, you know, that your time is up. And it's kind of, it's a tone. It's a couple tones, three tones, and basically their mics just mute down. And respectfully, if you want to give more time, you could. But I mean, that's just their signal of, you know, their time is going to be up. And then eventually their mic does get quieter. I think that's actually beneficial in some very other areas. I don't think it's the all the time thing, you know, but I think it also kind of gives the respect of where they're at and, you know, how the system runs. But I like how Phoenix has their mics keyed up that way so that it gives them a tone and then eventually kind of turns off the mic, so to speak. But just my thoughts, and I think they're good ones. So take them.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Next up, we go to Councilmember QB.
Thanks. I mean, about changing the time of our meetings, maybe we could have that in a calendar, calendaring discussion because that would also mean that each session would be earlier. For those of us who have nine to five schedules, that could be tough. But no, I support having it before and after. And and that's much, everyone's made all those arguments. I support before and after. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I was thinking about this as it was on here and in kind of what what that what has worked best and what we see. And I agree. I mean, I think it's really nice for people to have the opportunity to to speak before we do, to hear from them. And so they don't have to stay, you know, in council chambers till 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night, because that's pretty late. But I 100% agree with Councilmember Navarro. I do think that if we do add a time limit and do it before and after, which is totally fine with me, that we really do consider moving up these the meeting times. And in that way, we can have people come a little bit earlier and a little bit late. And I understand the thought that a lot of us have jobs. I mean, we all do. But, you know, I think we all knew that 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 was going to be part of the deal when, you know, we ran for election and signed up to represent the people too. So I get that. And I think this is kind of like a happy medium. And nobody wants to be at a meeting at 11 o'clock at night. And for us, I think, to start earlier, like a 3 o'clock or a 4 o'clock, I want to support that. I think that's a really great idea, whatever that looks like. And so I certainly do support that. I'm not opposed to the 60-minute time limit at the beginning. And then maybe, I don't know if we want to do a time limit in the after and after the meeting, which which is fine, whatever that looks like. But I would ask Carla, like, I don't know if if that's going to be an issue or not in regards to the way the meetings operate. If that's, you know, pretty doable, not not an issue at all. I think it'd just be good to hear from the clerk's office and when they run the meetings and what they've seen. And obviously, she probably got some history with this too. And obviously, being the clerk of the year, she definitely knows what's out there, what's great and what works well. So I, if it's okay, Mayor, I would like to kind of just get her thoughts too, if you don't mind. Thank you.
No, absolutely. I think it's a great suggestion, Councilmember. And I see the clerks' hands up. So Carla, would you mind responding?
Certainly. I did want to clarify one thing. We're not talking about public hearing, public input. We're talking about the general comment period specifically. So when we have a development agreement, ordinances, et cetera, that public comment comes as the agenda item comes forward. So we didn't propose changing that, just the general comment period. Beginning and end, I think, would be definitely doable. I may have to do a first come, first serve type arrangement. And we're going to be moving back into hybrid meetings. And in chambers, we do have a timer. It doesn't cut the mic, but it does have a light that turns yellow and gives you a warning and then turns green. And the timer for the electronic meetings is me sending the mayor messages. He can tell you that I send send those to him. But most of public comment tends to wrap up on time, which is good. And I don't think the mayor's only had to maybe cut one person off since we've gone to virtual meetings. So we'll have to, maybe we can look at a virtual solution too that is some sort of signal we can broadcast. But I like that idea, Joel. And then if council doesn't have any other concerns, I'll let your discussion continue. But Robin, definitely a doable thing.
Sounds good. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Carla. Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Anything else? Councilwoman?
No, I think that's great, Mayor. You know what, though? The one thing I did like is I did like Joel's idea, but honestly, Mayor, that's up to you. And that was only just to kind of, you know, kind of alleviate some of that pressure of having to shut people off. I mean, whether we call it the timeout clock or the wind down volume, I don't know. But I like the idea of being creative with that, if that's helpful at all.
Yeah, you know, one of the things I do like, and I know that, you know, it's it's an additional piece of technology. But I love the notion when we go back into the chambers eventually of having something that does sort of give a, even if it doesn't cut the mic, but a tone. Because sometimes I notice, you know, even if you're, if you're, I've spoken at public comment before I was a council member. And if you're talking and you're really focused on your notes and you're looking down at the lectern and you're also kind of nervous because you're speaking in front of a governing body, you don't even see the green, yellow, and red lights off to the side. You're just going and sometimes you're just looking down. And and so I love, I actually really like Councilmember Navarro's suggestion of something, whatever, that would give a more audible tone as well. So someone knows like, hey, look, that's your, that's your signal. You got to wrap up. You know, you got 30 seconds. So so, yeah, I do like that idea. And I think that's a really, that's something we should absolutely explore from a technological standpoint, especially once we're back in the chambers. Um, let me go to Vice Mayor Keating.
Thanks, Mayor. I do like, also like Councilmember Navarro's suggestion. I know that we do have a visual system, but some tones would certainly be helpful. I'm not opposed to it, you know, kind of starting to mute the mic after a certain amount of time. That's only because that saves you the, you know, the uncomfortableness of telling somebody their time's up and they have to stop. And we've had some meetings where people have refused to stop. And a former Mayor Mitchell had to use his gavel. And I just think it's a kind of a cleaner solution that that, you know, keeps the meeting moving and saves, you know, yourself, you know, the uncomfortableness of having to tell somebody their time's up and then he move on with the next person's speak.
Absolutely.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Navarro.
Yeah, all I say is just check out what Phoenix is doing. It's when I saw it, I was like, that's pretty slick. It's it's very, it's it's not offensive. It didn't seem offensive, some very nice tones. And I think the mic, I don't know if it totally cut out, but it just quieted down real slowly or something like that. But something to look at for sure.
Absolutely, Councilmember Navarro. And it's also your and Vice Mayor Keating and Councilmember Arredondo Savage's comments. I was also sort of thinking about ADA accessibility and compliance, you know, during this time. I mean, there could be, you know, everyone obviously has, you know, we all, some people can see things visually. Some people can hear things more audibly. And so I do think that more of those options in the chambers, not only is a are better tools for us to help manage the meeting and probably, you know, me much more so as the chair, but also, quite honestly, it's probably also the more accessible thing to do in keeping with Tempe's values of accessibility to all people who want to come and address the city council. So no, I really appreciate that suggestion. And I agree that there are sister cities to us that we can definitely look at to see how this technology works and probably begin to price some of it out. Councilmember Garland.
I was thinking of the Gong Show Gong, like right behind you, Mayor.
Are you, are you volunteering to do it like?
Exactly. I can help you. I'll be on the side. I can do it. No, but I do like the idea of the tone and the light. I think that's a great idea. And I'm glad that we're looking at that. So thank you so much, Councilmember Navarro.
Absolutely. So here's what, here's what I've got so far. Just let me just see if this kind of sums up what we were, what we've talked about. It sounds like the council was okay with going to a public comment period at the beginning and at the end of the meeting. Maybe we could do an hour time limit in the beginning and an hour time limit at the end. We would not allow for people to double up if you speak in the beginning of the meeting. You cannot come back up at the end of the meeting and speak again. You would get one bite at the apple during the meeting. And obviously, as Councilmember Navarro first brought up, we should look into some opportunities to get some enhanced technology, especially when we go back into the chambers, you know, perhaps a tone system or something that begins to lower or mute the mic when a person goes overtime or to alert them when their time's about to be up. And then as a separate conversation, I know we can't totally discuss it because it's not agendized here. But at a future calendaring meeting, we can absolutely, as a council, have the conversation about whether or not we would like to move up those regular council meeting times to make this even more workable. Does that sound okay with everyone? Or is there something that I left out?
Good with that, Mayor. Sounds good.
All right, all right. Sounds, sounds like we're good. Keely, do you have enough direction to go forward then?
I think we do. Judy, I just wanted to double check that you felt like you got what you needed in order to draft the rules that you needed to change.
Yes, thank you so much, Keely. I think we're in good shape.
Okay, great. All right. Well, let's move on to the next topic, which is item 1C, the council committees. So the next item on the agenda is discussion about the council committees. As you know, they have been meeting for a few months now and they were established in lieu of the previous work group structure. There have been a few issues that have come up over the past few months that staff would like the council to discuss and give us direction on. We make staff recommendations on some of the items that we are asking the council to consider, but not all. I will be sure to let you know which items have staff staff recommendations. But first, a very short overview for the benefit of anyone from the public who's watching the meeting. So first, the council committees, we have three, human services and community safety, sustainable living livable communities and the workforce readiness and economic vitality committee. And each committee is made up of two council members. The mayor serves at this point as a quote ex officio member. And the council has approved work plans that outline and prioritize the work. And each council committee has met a different number of times, but some have met as few as three times, some has met as many as six times. Additionally, these council committees are staffed by the council aides with each council aide as a lead staffer on a council committee as well as a backup staffer on an additional council committee. So our first questions are around clarifying membership issues related to council committees. Specifically, what is the lifespan of the current council committees and what constitutes quorum? What is the role of the mayor in the council committee work? And what happens on an issue if a council committee can't reach consensus on an item? Elizabeth is here to answer any procedural questions, as is Judy, though Elizabeth worked closely with me on on preparing for this. So let me get back to the first item. What is the lifespan of the council committee? Will the current council committee makeup in jurisdictions be reassessed and new appointments made in July 2022 when new council members join the council? The staff would recommend that that would be the case, that the council committee should be reappointed and reassessed in July 2022. But we just wanted to make sure we understood what the council's intent is on this issue.
All right, sounds good. So council, we're going to consider consider this one first. I'm in favor of that. I think we should probably have the council committees in place for a year. And then we should annually kind of frankly, go back and reassess and make sure that those committees actually are still working. And that really does constitute what each council member really wants to work on. So my thought would be a year and then we would reevaluate and shift things as necessary. But I will go to Vice Mayor Keating next.
Yeah, I agree with that. I just want to make sure council members have the option of continuing on the committee if they're enjoying that particular assignment. So it's not like you have to move if you if you don't want to.
Absolutely. Sounds good. Well, thank you, Vice Mayor. Let's go next to Councilmember Navarro.
Yep, I agree, Mayor. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, Councilmember QB.
Oops. It could make sense to do it in cycles of two years, but I don't really have a dog in that fight. And we're just talking about the lifespan right now, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Flexibility. We don't want to straightjacket ourselves.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember QB. Absolutely. Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
I know, Mayor. I think I think it's just good to have this conversation and just talk about a little bit. And and I'm okay with that. I was kind of was thinking the same lines that Lauren was too, that we can almost do it for two years. But I like the idea of being flexible and then just maybe looking and adjusting things, you know, that works accordingly. And then people that are in the committees that they're comfortable with too. And I know Randy never wants to leave the committee that, you know, we're on together because I'm sure it's me that is making him so happy and excited to want to be part of Rev forever. Thanks, Randy. Appreciate you. Thanks, Mayor.
Of course.
I'm already prepared in July to do a lot of consoling of Randy, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. I'm I'm here for him.
The counseling hat on. That's perfect. Thank you, Mayor Woods.
You, absolutely. Councilmember Garland.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. So I agree with what Randy and what you had said about the committees and, you know, not booting somebody off a committee if they are still happy with what they're doing. I also think that, you know, we should be looking maybe at a two-year span instead of a one-year. Specifically, because if you think about the committees who've only had three meetings, so then they would be on a committee and those committees would have only had three meetings and or four meetings. And then then they're off the next year. So I, I was just wondering if we could revisit the discussion or possibility of maybe doing it every two years instead of every every year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. I think, you know, and I'll see if I can keep talking to Councilmember Garland about this. I think from my perspective, I mean, I would, I would be happy with, and I don't know if council would be too, coming back in a year and just having the conversation. But I don't think that the council committee. But I don't think that the council committees necessarily have to immediately expire in a year's time. But I would at least probably like to come back and do a little bit of a check-in. Because if for whatever reason, something isn't working or the committee, let's say the, the work plan isn't expansive enough or someone just really has a desire to, to move on to something else. I just wouldn't want someone to feel locked in. But I would, but I mean, but I'm happy to, I think it's just trying to build in some flexibility. But, um, but you know, I don't know. I don't know what you think about that.
I mean, I think having the discussion each year, I think is a good one, but I think good one. But I still think, you know, again, if you think about if there are holidays or like summer breaks were off for a month and we've lost another month. So again, our, our year is cut short. So if you're cutting a year short, really you're not getting a full year's worth of participation on that committee. So I can see maybe coming back and having that discussion or just talking about how is it going. But I still think looking at a two-year process might be a little bit better than just a single year. That's just my thought. Thank you.
Well, let me, let me see if I could put that idea out there to council. If we want to do something like, you know, to Councilmember Garland's suggestion that we would do a two-year, you know, council committees would be in place for two years, but with a one-year review, just to ensure that everything is still going as council members would expect. Vice Mayor Keating.
Mayor, I understand where Councilmember Garland is coming from, but my preference would be one year because we can stay on the committee as long as we want. You could be on the committee for your entire term if that's where you wanted to be. I think with a one-year committee structure, we have the option of moving if we don't like that committee. If, say, I want to join the Sustainable Communities Committee, I don't have to wait two years to do that. I could, I'd be able to do that in July. So, you know, I think it's not like anyone's being forced off a committee that they want to participate in, but they do have the option of moving to a different committee that they might feel more fulfilled in.
Sounds good. Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. Let me next go to Councilmember Adams.
I agree with Vice, Vice Mayor Keating on this issue. I think the one year is a good span. Also, you know, we, we all have new council members and things like that. So I like the one year and reevaluate where, where we are in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Let me go to Councilmember Navarro.
Mayor, I agree with one year at this point. Question, if you do have a member that does want to get off a committee and everybody else wants to stay on their committee, does that nullify that person from not getting off? That's my question.
So you say, if someone wants to leave a committee, say that one more time?
So if you only have one council member that wants to get off their committee, but everybody else wants to stay where they're at, I would assume that council member does lose.
I, I think, I think so. Yeah. I mean, unless they could find a willing partner to swap committees with, it seems to me that if we had a two-year, you would be stuck in that committee if someone else did not volunteer to make a switch.
Wait, Mr. Mayor, to that point, I mean, but
Yes.
relate to whether you were ex officio or on that committee, we haven't made that decision yet. Cause I mean, it wouldn't be a quorum. So if there were three, if there were three members, I mean, there could be that possibility that happening.
Yeah, I think the only thing, I think what I was
They don't want to leave someone with one, right? You don't want to leave a committee of one or
Right, yeah. I mean, to Councilmember Navarro's point, I think what I, I mean, I know I was the one who kind of, you know, made the assignments, you know, for the committees. But obviously I would never, you know, take someone off of a committee if someone said, hey, I really want to stay here. Kind of like Vice Mayor Keating was saying, I would never go to a council member and say, you have to move because I just want you to move. I would want that person to pursue their passion and if they feel like they're getting stuff done, they should remain. I guess, I think, you know, to Councilmember Navarro's point, let's say that, you know, he and Councilmember Garland are on a committee and Councilmember Garland says, hey, I'd like to move to a different committee. But everyone else says, honestly, I'm, I'm fine here. Like, I don't want to go. So it seems to me that, that it would be hard to then allow that swap to happen if I don't have another willing person to swap with her.
Yeah, Mayor, I think that'd be great. Unless there's like a life, health, safety risk, like the other council member has threatened or is probably going to beat him up at the parking lot, something like that. Then I would say, yeah, you probably move.
Joel, I've apologized to you for that on several occasions.
That's what I'm trying to get at. That's what I'm trying to get at, Woods.
A long time ago, man. We go back to Councilmember Cubey here. I see your hand still.
I thought, I thought the Vice Mayor Keating made a really good point, so I'm happy with the one year. I'm sensing he wants to come to the Sustainable Livable Communities Committee. I don't know. Anyway, yeah, I'm, I'm happy with it being one year.
Okay. So let me go back to Councilmember, I think we have consensus, but I'm going to go back to Councilmember Garland.
I, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with the Vice Mayor Keating's suggestion. I, I just wanted to, I guess, bring back, bring it back to, you're not going to be booting anybody off after a year. We're going to be discussing and reevaluating. So I appreciate that. So thanks, Mayor.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Garland. So it sounds, Keely, like we have consensus to go with a one-year council committee. And, and obviously at the end of every year, we will come back and still have discussions. And if the committees are working well and council members want to continue, we could just leave them in place for another year. But, but it sounds like we'll just leave them in place for a year and we'll come back and review.
Okay, thank you. And, and so, but we keep the current council committees in place through the end of June 2022 and then have the new ones appointed July of 2022. Okay, got it.
Yes.
All right. So moving on to quorum requirements, there has been some confusion over whether or not a council committee can meet if only one member is present. Judy has advised us that under the open meeting law, both members need to be present for the council committee to meet, whether or not action is taken. So I wanted to make sure first that everybody knew that and that we're all on the same page about what constitutes a quorum under the current structure. Is that, everybody, is there any questions about that? If not, we'll move on to the issue of whether or not the mayor counts towards quorum.
That's, that's my understanding, Keely. Yeah.
All right. So related to this issue is whether the presence of the mayor counts towards quorum. The mayor can attend the meeting if available to meet the quorum requirements, but the council rules would have to be amended for that to happen. The current version of Roberts Rules of Order state that an ex officio officer without an obligation to participate is not counted as part of the quorum or as part of the required quorum of the board. So our staff recommendation is that we do amend the council rules to clarify that the mayor's attendance does count toward quorum. If you're willing to serve in that capacity, just in the, in the case that you might want to attend, but also if there's a situation where somebody at the last minute can't attend a meeting and we'd like to be able to go ahead with the meeting versus having to cancel it because both members can't be present.
All right, sounds good. Well, I thank you for that introduction, Keely. I will go ahead and open it up to council to, I guess the question on the table here is, do, do, does council want me to count for quorum? I will go to Councilmember Cubey. And Council
Sorry about that. Yeah, so, um, yeah, I mean, ideally, we don't want, we don't want to have meetings be canceled. So if you were a member, well, you wouldn't have to cancel and you wouldn't have to cancel a meeting if you were, if you were ex officio, right? You could still, the meeting could still carry on.
I guess that's, that's a great question, Councilmember Cubey. And I guess I'll turn to Keely and probably Judy as well on this too. If, if I am, if I have, so let's say that council makes the decision after this conversation that I will count for quorum. Does that immediately change my status as an ex officio member to something different? Or can I be an ex officio member who counts for quorum only?
Mayor, council members, Judy Bannan, City Attorney. So I think that you have the discretion to amend the rules of council procedure as you would prefer. So if your recommendation, if the consensus of council is that you remain ex officio, but that you would count for purposes of quorum, that would not obligate you to attend every single committee meeting. But in those instances where you would like to attend and where it would be helpful for it to count as quorum, that would be allowed per the rules.
Well, I mean, it makes sense then, Mr. Mayor, but you know, I shouldn't speak for you. I know you're often pulled in many different directions and there's times though where we need you to come so we don't have to delay a meeting because staff has something pretty urgent they have to put forward. And, you know, if one of the council, the committee meeting, committee chairs can't be present, they're going to let their voice be known, like, well, no, wait, this is too important. I want to be there. I have something to say. So I think that might be a possible solution. I'm just interested in making it simple. Like as far as consensus with two members, it just seems like, you know, there shouldn't be, you know, a tyranny of the minority. There shouldn't be one or frankly, two members. But let's say you were a voting member and with Jennifer and I, and I was putting something forward that you didn't want, she didn't want. Well, you know, chances are it's not going to succeed, but at least you go to work study and the rest of the council can weigh in on it. We're all, all interested in having these ideas and these discussions. So, you know, and since any two members can call the question and bring it forward, it just seems like we should make it simple, that split decisions can go forward. And obviously in a work study, the rest of the council would know it's a split decision and they'd get to hear, you know, both sides or multiple sides or multiple perspectives. But I think if we get locked into too many, well, you have to have, you know, if it's ex officio, that we're not sure that Cory would have to weigh in and be the ultimate deciding one, it still, it'd still be two deciding and not the whole council deciding. And we haven't seen tons of issues come up through, through the council committee. So to me, it makes sense to just not make the rules so tight and so restrictive. As I said, any two members can call the question, but that's calling it to a regular council meeting and having to make a decision without the benefit of a work-study discussion. So that's not ideal. That's not collegial. So, you know, I would, my, my, I would like to see split decisions just move forward as they, as they are. And then work study can decide, the committee hall can decide whether it should go to a council meeting or maybe more public discussion or they have more questions. That's the way I think we should best move forward. I think that's the most democratic way and the way that will bring the best ideas forward to the entire council.
All right. Well, Councilmember, you, you pretty much encapsulated the last three questions in that. I was, I was reading though, which is fine. We just totally
Trying to move things along.
No, 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 no. I appreciate you. Um, let me go to Councilmember Garland.
Mayor, so I, I just want to be clear. So are we, we should, we are right now just discussing just a staff recommendation for quorum and then we'll move to the other ones? Or do you want the
They're all interrelated though. I guess that's the point. I was
Yeah, I mean, if I, if I'm trying to think about, it's, if I basically am going back to what Councilmember Cubey just said, when it sounds like she's saying, and obviously Councilmember Cubey, stop me if I'm wrong in any way here. It sounds like she's saying that, I mean, I could count for quorum. I would not be a voting member. But if, if, if council members deadlock on their committee after working on an issue for a period of time, that the issue would not just simply die in the committee, but that it would go to the full body in a work-study session for a full conversation. Is that correct?
You said it much better than me. Yes.
Thank you. Um, let me go to Councilmember Navarro.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. Yeah, I, I think logically that's kind of how things have been going. You know, or informally that, that if two council members disagreed on an issue, we'll just take it to the, to the work study and, and just let the council listen to it and, and they can hash it, we can hash it out there. So yeah, I would agree to the setup. I think this, you know, would possibly come up for sure on various things. I think there's the opportunity within the committee for sure for those discussions if they, you know, did bring an issue up and, and it wasn't really seasoned or ready for an in-depth discussion, they would go back and the next month they'd reengage on that same discussion with more data and more information. And if they still disagree, then that's when the perfect timing is to, to bring it to the council if, if they choose to go that direction. So I, I think I agree with that. With you being a, I think I'm reading this right, with you being a, a missing, so if there's a committee meeting and there's a missing, or one of the council members could not attend, you would substitute for that council member, but just to be a quorum. Unless that meeting is of urgent matter, with everything virtual and everything like that, you know, I think there's some opportunities to reschedule and maybe do a virtual type of thing, which we kind of are right now. But if in the extreme case that you had to attend, I guess, but I, I just don't know if that would, you know, ever could, would come about. So if I'm correct on that.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I just, um,
Yes.
Just kind of having a little offline conversation with Judy. I think we did divide them on purpose because whether or not you count toward quorum, we believe is a separate question from whether or not you are a voting member. Because allowing you to count toward quorum just allows the meeting to move forward if another member isn't allowed, isn't able to be there. And, and we know, I know of at least two situations where we've had meetings with one member where if we could have called you in at the last minute to come, that would have been the, the better way to, to do it. And we just were unclear on what the, how the rules applied at that point. So, so that's really, we just want to make sure we get specific. I know you guys are starting to wrap up into all of these issues here, but that we get specific direction on the quorum issue, separate from the voting issue, I guess, is what we're asking for.
Okay. So, so yeah, we'll, we'll try to go ahead, you know, to keep this separate, just to make sure that there's clarity for staff. And so on the quorum issue, I'll just throw this out there and then I will go to Councilmember Arredondo Savage next. So for the quorum issue, I think the biggest thing has been that the city attorney is uncomfortable with sort of one council member counting for consensus. Or one council member being able to move a meeting forward, whatever. So therefore I would attend the meeting for the purpose of at least keeping city business going forward. I am totally fine with that. It's not overburdening me in any way to attend your meetings. I'm a policy dork and I like this stuff. So, um, so I, so I guess so from a quorum standpoint, I guess the, you know, are people okay with me counting at least for quorum so business could keep happening? I'll, I'll put that question out there and I will go to Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Right. I, I guess my thought is on this, I feel like they all are kind of intertwined, right? In, in what the end game is, what we're trying to, to accomplish here, right? So I get it, Keely. I know, I know you're wanting to keep things a little bit separate. But to me, I feel like, you know, like, like Lauren said, they're all a little together. So, I mean, I, I just want to say we're adults, right? And, and I think there's issues on an agenda that, you know, as a team, we'd be able to figure out how to make that work and, and make sure that we are both involved in the conversation and hearing the information first and foremost. I, I would hope that help has happened. I know what's happened with Randy and I. I think we've been really good and very thoughtful of each other, which I think is, is what all we can ask for, right? Is the most important thing. So with that being said, I, Mayor, I don't have a problem you, you stepping in if like I couldn't be there on an emergency or something like that. But then I feel like you'd almost have to be a voting member. But at the same time, my thought process is I don't want you to have to be like a tiebreaker. Never. I would never want to put you in that position. And I don't think that's fair because you probably hadn't been involved in all the conversations and all the different resources and information that we've seen. So I think to put you in that position, I just don't think that's fair and I don't support that. So I, I don't want to ever make you come in and have to make a decision and then we're doing a roundabout, a roundabout for, around another council member. So I'm not really sure how we accomplish that. So Keely, I'm just going to tell you what I would like to see at the end and you figure out how we get there. Maybe that would be easier. Like I said, I, I think we're adults. I think we can figure it out. We meet once a month. And, and I like the idea and I, and I get it. And I think the mayor and I have been involved back before when we had, you know, task groups, you know, that we had three people on a group, we had a conversation, we didn't agree. And so what happens with that when we don't agree, right? And it was basically, we brought it back to the council, not as a recommendation because we couldn't come to a consensus. We couldn't agree on a recommendation going forward. So, but it did come back to the council and then the council had that conversation. And I think that's, that's totally fair and that's the way it should be. I do not have an issue with that. Though the one thing that I would really like to ensure that we do is spend the time trying to vet out those ideas or those suggestions, making sure that we've gone, done our homework and gone through all the documentation, all the data. And, and if we can't reach a consensus after, you know, maybe it's a few meetings at least, I would hope that we're taking that time and, and we can work something out. Maybe there's a few things we can agree on. Maybe there's some things that we can't, that it maybe comes out of our committee as just, I don't know, something called, calling it something other than a recommendation, because it wouldn't be. I feel like a recommendation should have some consensus or at least pieces within it that do. So, you know, maybe it's just, you know, thoughts from the committee and then we can, like, you know, Councilmember Navarro said, you know, have a conversation about it as a council. But I feel like it's our responsibility within these committees to really do our due diligence. And, and so I wouldn't want us to just do one meeting and say, oh, we can't, we can't come to consensus. We're out. Let's move it on. I really want us to take the time and be thoughtful and really try to compromise and see if there are some things that we could bring out there that we, we can agree together. Cause I think that was what the intent was. But I understand though too, if there are some, some barriers and we can't quite get there. But it, it shouldn't just die. So whatever that might look like and how we get there, Keely, hopefully you can figure that out. That would be my desire. And I don't want to put the mayor in any position to have to be a tiebreaker or to have to come in to be that, that voting person that says, does it go or does it not? I, I just don't think that's fair to him or to anybody coming forward. So, thank you. Hopefully that helps. I don't know.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Let me next go to Vice Mayor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with most everything Councilmember Arredondo Savage just said with one caveat and one question for Keely. The caveat is, I, I do believe the mayor should be a time breaking vote. And here's why is, is one, the mayor's the mayor. And in this body, as you know, we do kind of have a weak mayor system where, you know, the mayor, though he sets the agenda and, and runs though he sets the agenda and, and runs chairs of the meetings, only has one vote out of seven. This would be a unique way that the mayor can kind of implement his vision for the city during his term. Whether if there's an issue he strongly supports or strongly agrees with, we can at least have those discussions as a whole body if it's brought forth to the council, um, with, you know, the title of recommendation. So I do think that, you know, that the mayor shouldn't have a vote if it comes down to it. That all said, you know, I'm fine with if you want to just do something where, um, it's not a recommendation, but any, any item that the council can't come to an agreement on, um, doesn't just, or not seeing that the council, the committee can't come to an agreement on, doesn't just die, but is a, there is an opportunity to have a full discussion with all of our colleagues on to see where exactly we want to go with it. So really I think, you know, the need for consensus for items to move forward and is the mayor a voting member are two sides of the same coin. As long as we don't need a consensus to keep having a conversation, not a policy. You know, we get, and I'm okay with that, but philosophically at least, I do think the mayor should, should be in a position to make a deciding vote. Um, on an issue that two council members who have worked hard together, but can't come to a consensus on, um, you know, are, are trying to see happen or not happen. So I would ask Keely then to make sure that if that's the direction we're going to get. My vote is for the mayor to be a voting member to be clear for consensus. But i- if, if we're not going to do that, it sounds like we are going to have consensus to be able to move items for a larger, larger discussion, which I'm happy about. So my, my one concern would be with staff time, right? Say, say I want to, I'm beginning to think of a policy, I can't, looking at my dog, I'm trying to go dog related to policy, but I can't. So if I want to bring something forward, a specific policy, but I can't come to consensus with my co-chair, I want that policy looks like. But I need staff to frame the policy for me so I can have that discussion with the council as a whole. How would that work? Because a lot of these things are rather nebulous until we get them on paper and we start looking at, you know, with devils in the detail. So a, a lot of things like, uh, for Tempe Pre, for example, and now that, now that me and my co-chair are odds on any of these things, but just, I was using examples from my own committee. You know, how would that look if say me and Councilmember Arredondo Savage disagree on the future of Tempe Pre? I want to come forth with a proposal that says this, she wants a proposal that says that, but we have to agree to let staff flush those out. How, how does that process work? Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. Keely, did you want to take that? Would you rather have me continue to kind of get more input first?
Uh, I just, I guess I would kind of want Andrew to start, uh, thinking about that too. Because I think from our standpoint, I think it would still be appropriate for your council aide, particularly in this case, it would be your own aide to work on preparing documents for you. But I can't really speak for the, you know, the folks who work for, um, under human services or whatever. I feel like that's a question for Andrew, I suppose, in terms of if there should be, you know, staff dedicated to it at his level, um, to help prepare you for the meeting.
Let me, let me say this, whatever, I mean, maybe I can try and I'm going to go to Councilmember Garland after this and see if I can maybe get to the, to the bigger hot button question here and, and still trying to kind of keep these a little bit separate for Judy and Keely. So the question that, that Vice Mayor Keating touched upon and Councilmember Arredondo Savage did of the third one, of is the mayor a voting member? Cause that seems to be the question that's, that's more, right, prevalent in people's minds right now. So Councilmember Arredondo Savage basically, I think from my, said, no, I don't, I don't think the mayor should be in that position of having to be a voting member. Vice Mayor Keating said, yes, I think the mayor should have to break ties if we can't get to a point of consensus in the group. So basically that's kind of where I'm right now. Let me see if I can go to Councilmember Garland and just see what she thinks about the notion of making me a voting member or not.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I, I, I like, it's easier for me to break these things down individually like they were written. So as far as a quorum, yes, I think you should be a part of the quorum if a person is absent. As far as a voting member, no, I do not think you should be a voting member. And, and I, I was driving me a little bit crazy because I think Councilmember Robin Arredondo Savage read my notes somehow because she almost hit all, all of my points. One of the points specifically for that is I don't think that, um, I don't think that, bless your heart, Mayor, I know you're up to date on a lot of things, but i- if there's anything that's happened in the past on something that's going to be voted on at a meeting, you may not be up to date with the latest information that's been given. So I think that puts you at a disadvantage to be able to make a vote when that, when the person is gone. Um, and I also think that, um, you know, I don't think it's necessary for us to have to break, for you to have to break a tie if we are able to find some other mechanism to be able to move an item forward. And I guess that goes down through to the consensus idea is if we do not have consensus on a committee, then finding some way to be able to say, as long as that has been discussed at a council meeting or at a committee meeting, a, a few times at least, not just once, then they can, those two chairs can agree to not specifically recommend it, but move it forward to a work study session. What I wouldn't want to see is, is if I bring something to my committee and, you know, I like it and, and Joel doesn't like it, then we say, okay, well, neither one of us agree, let's just move it to work study. Well, then I don't, then we're losing the point and the fabric of what our council committees are supposed to look like. The other thing about you being a tiebreaker is, and then maybe Judy, um, can tell me if this is correct or not, but if you are coming to a meeting to be a tiebreaker, you have spoken, then there's three of you in there. If you leave that committee and it's taken to the council for a vote later on, does that mean that you guys have already spoken to your three or your two? And then you can't, um, discuss that topic or that issue with the other council colleagues? Because then I think what you've done to yourself then is you've put yourself on a bit of an island. And I don't know how that would really work, um, moving forward. So as far as those go, I think, so Keely, I'm, I'm yes over the quorum, no for the mayor being a part of the vote. And I think the consensus is, I think we need to come up with a way to be able to take, if we don't have consensus, a logical way after multiple times of trying to have a discussion move forward in a committee, to then be able to take that information and go ahead and move it to a work study session so it can still get heard by the entire council. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Garland. Let me next go to Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I think that you should be a tiebreaker. I think that's why we have seven people on council. And, uh, I, I, I trust your judgment and I think that in your role as mayor, that, uh, you should be a tiebreaker. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Let me next go to Councilmember Navarro.
Oh, I don't know now. I, I, I kind of, I'm battling with this one. So I, I'm, as I'm taking it, within that committee, you could be the tiebreaking vote for that issue to go on or not, as opposed to just let it go to the work study and let it be vetted there. I, I, I don't know why, I still can't, I still think that going to the work state, let it be vetted there, like we've done in the past, would be the solution. So I'm kind of still stuck on that, uh, to let that process ride like that. So there, I guess that's where I'm at.
Okay, let me go to Councilmember QB.
I agree with what, uh, Councilmember Navarro was saying and, cause it does put you in a position, because we've had conversations about, about this, like early on when we were, before we established the committees, um, Mayor, and you said, well, I wouldn't want to be the one who's holding something back. I want to, you know, want at least to put it forward. But then it does put you in a position because you're putting it forward, then you're kind of hampered. You can't really vote against it because you, there's this mistaken impression maybe that you're supporting it, where you just think it should have a, a more robust hearing, you know, from the rest of the committee, from the committee, the whole. So it does put you in a strange spot like that. So I think you shouldn't be a voting member, but that split decisions go forward as they have, you know? I'm thinking about Councilmember Granville, we disagreed on the puppy mail issue. And he, he met me for a beer and he said, if you support me, if you endorse me, I will let this, we'll go forward and I'll support this going forward, work study. If you, if you don't, I won't. And it's split decisions aren't good. And it's like, no, I'd rather, I said to him, I'd rather bring this to the whole council and, and get their whole thoughts on this. That's going to be valuable to me. So, and not to bring up, yeah, I just think that's just an example of where, you know, there are split decisions and it was successful outcome because I was able to bring it to the entire council and get their, um, thoughts and opinions, you know? So I, I think it puts you in a weird position because you said to me that you'd never want to be the one that holds it back. But then by not holding it back, it's implied that you're supporting it and that may not be the case. So I think it's better not to have you be a voting member and that the split, split decisions just go forward as a split decision. As some, you know, recommendation.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. I, I'm just going to go back one, uh, circle back here to Councilmember Navarro. I just want to ask him about, uh, basically just, you know, do you, do you think that at the end of the day, I should be a voting, a voting member in this? I just want to just circle back with you really quickly.
Um, in, in the, in the process of you being in, in the committee?
In, in, in the, in the committees, yeah. I mean, do you think that, I mean, you know, that I should be, that I should act as a tiebreaker? Or do you think that I should just count for quorum? I mean, I'm not pushing you, I'm just putting it out there.
I, I think if it's, if, if, yeah, but count for quorum, I would say yes, I would, I would go down that road. I, I, I just kind of have a, there, there's a part of me that has an issue within the committee. Committees are just vetting out stuff, just working things out. And sometimes, uh, if, if the case of council member could not make that meeting for whatever reason, but the process still had to go on, uh, at the end of the day, you're not, it doesn't sabotage that council member to just derail a project that potentially could have some legs or not. I, I don't know. So I say you're be just a, a quorum and then let the, let it go to, and the quorum would just decide, hey, okay, this issue is going to go to, uh, the, the full work, you know, study group and we'll vet it out there and that would, that would be my preference.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Okay, so it sounds like, Keely, the consensus here from my notes is that I would, I would not be a voting member for the purpose of being in the committee. Uh, so I would not be casting tiebreaking votes based on what the council has said. But I, we think we should now go back to question two about quorum. And so far I've got notes here, uh, Councilmember Navarro and Councilmember Garland, uh, did say that I should count for quorum. I think Councilmember QB, you might have said that as well, but I want to double check, I don't want to misquote you, so.
Yes, you should count for quorum, yes.
Okay. All right, let me look to the other council members here to see, uh, what they think about me counting for quorum. Uh, I think it's a residual hand, but I'm just going to call it anyway, uh, Councilmember Adams.
Forgot to put my hand down, I apologize.
No worries. Do you, do you think I should count, just, I, do you think I should count for quorum or what, what do you think?
Yes, I do.
Okay. All right, thank you, Councilmember Adams. So it sounds like we've got consensus on that item as well. And then the last issue here would be, and I should, I'll just quickly recap before we get to the fourth and last question here. So the council committees would last for one year. The quorum, I, I will count for quorum to ensure that, uh, there are always two members there and that business continues to be, to move forward and get done. I will not count as a voting member to cast tiebreaking votes in committees. And then the last question is the need for consensus to move forward. I guess, do we have consensus, there might be some conversation around this, about if things, if council members after a certain period of time in a committee cannot reach consensus to move an item forward with a joint recommendation, that that item would therefore go to the work study for the full body to have a discussion. It sounds to me generally like that's what everyone wants. They don't want things just dying in the committee, I prefer like a one-one tie. I guess the only question might be, and you might have others, is how long should, uh, two members of the group have to deliberate before something gets kicked to the work study? Because what I did hear a lot of council members saying is that I don't want this to, to be an impatient thing, though I heard a couple of council members say, we're all adults here. And, and, and so just repeating your words. And so I think what they wanted was not to go to a meeting in September for two people to disagree and then say, I can't deal with this. I, I'm, I'm going to call the mayor and have him put it on work study. Cause I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to debate this. So I think, I, I think people were saying there, we should not use the work study to short circuit the purpose of the committees. But I guess then the question would become, what is the appropriate duration, whether it's months or number of meetings, before two council members could come forward and say, look, we've, Mayor, we've reached an impasse on this and we need to take this to work study to have a full discussion. Uh, let me go to Vice Mayor Keating for his comments.
Thanks, Mayor. I actually have a, I still have questions about what we've come to consensus on and I like to ask the city manager. What exactly is the process then for, if, if, if there's not consensus in, in a, in a committee, how can a council member get staff time to, to work on the policy that they want to bring forward to, um, a work study session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Council Vice Mayor Keating. I guess, based on what has happened to date and listening to the conversation today, some of it may depend upon at what point lack of consensus occurs. In other words, if there's, uh, presentations and information that is presented to your committee or any committee, just using sort of an abstract example, um, and that that work is done towards the idea of eventually coming up with a policy recommendation to bring back to council. And then at the, the point in whatever meeting it is, that a recommendation is going to be moved forward or not moved forward, there is a one-to-one impasse or lack of consensus between two council members. Then to your point, Vice Mayor, then it seems like much of the work would have already been done and it could either A, stay there and simply not move forward, or B, uh, as I, has been suggested by, I think, at least one, if not two other council members, that it could simply come back to a future, uh, work study session, committee of the whole for, uh, for consideration by the full council with the opportunity for both council members to explain why they felt the way they did at committee. And then if that happened, then the item would then be heard for consensus by the entire council. To your other point, if at some point, uh, early on, there's a, a, an understanding prior to the policy position being developed, that there's a lack of consensus there, then I suppose that during the monthly, or I should say, I think since we are typically meeting once a month in work study session, but whenever the next available work study session is, there's always a place on the work study session agenda for each committee to report. And if that happened early and the early report is, hey, we got to impasse early, we didn't develop this, how would you like us to proceed? It could go back for reassignment potentially to a different committee. It could be, uh, tasked with, uh, staff bringing forward a presentation at an IRS. There are maybe other options that could be explored at that point. So whether it's fully developed or not fully developed, it seems like your monthly check-ins with your council colleagues could cure this issue potentially. At least that's one perspective.
I guess I still understand how we're going to debate a policy that hasn't been written.
Right, that's to, to your question, once, if the policy's been written, it's been debated and there's an impasse, that's the easy scenario. If at early on, it's clear that even though it may be on that committee's work plan, that there's lack of consensus to even formulate a policy, that's then when it could come back potentially. I would just put out for conversation today that the rest of council could hear that at a, at a committee update, at a work study session for then consideration as to how can we potentially, if there's interest on the part of council, have that item, you know, move forward in some other fashion so that information can in fact be gathered by staff so that either another committee or the full council can give policy direction, um, if that's where staff is directed to do.
Mayor?
Okay, uh, Councilmember Navarro.
Yeah, that's, I, I, I agree with, with our city manager. I mean, that's just basically what we've done in the past. We've always started off on an issue and if the issue is just something that they just can't agree on, be, before they dive into the full work and scope of stuff that they might just say, hey, listen, I'm, I'm both just, we're disagreeing. Let's go to the council, we'll see if we have enough votes to continue on. And we've had those discussions in the past, some of them continued on, some of them have it. And I think the process is not broken if we still maintain the same process we've always had.
Good point.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Let's go to Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I, I think what, I, I don't know, Randy, I, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm, I'm thinking what you're thinking and your, your thought process is if we don't agree on whatever issue it is, that we need to create a policy either way and then take it forward. But I think Joel's kind of right. It sounds like in the past, and I'm thinking about some of the things that we've done before, we've never really brought a full policy forward. I think we've actually just brought in a recommendation and an idea forward and then the policy is created from that discussion with the entire council. So I, I'm not sure if I'm hearing you right or what your concerns are, but, you know, I, I, I think I'm fine if we need to, to draft some type of policy that says, hey, look, you know what, we've met a few times, we've, we've talked about it, we've vetted it out. We really can't come to a recommendation, but we really want the council to hear it. And then from the council's perspective, they may pick and choose or vote it down, vote it up. And then it's whether we move, keep, continue to move forward or we don't. And, and so I, thinking that, that I'm hearing you right, but I, I'm really comfortable not creating that policy within the committee, but actually after the council has to approve it anyway to, even if we both agreed, we would have to take it to the council and then the council would say, yeah, this looks really good, go, move, move forward. We would create the policy or staff would create the policy, whatever that looks like. Is that right, Mayor? I mean, isn't that the way we've done it in the past?
Um, I think there's been a couple of ways it's been done. I mean, I mean, so, yeah, I, I see both sides of this. I think, you know, the, when you, um, Councilmember Arredondo Savage talked about you and I working with Councilmember Gran- when you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage, talked about you and I working with Councilmember Granville previously on that distracted driving ordinance. I remember during that, that working group we were in, I remember I think you and I both saying like, you know, hey, you can bring this forward. I mean, we're not going to stop it from getting out of committee, but we're not going to vote for it because we just don't think the policy is written well. Um, and so we, so in that situation, I guess to Vice Mayor Keating's point, there was a, there was a policy, whatever, or a sort of a draft ordinance that was already written that then went back to the regular council meeting for an up or down vote. However, I also see what you're saying about saying like, well, if we can't come to a specific policy recommendation, perhaps you could still bring a, you know, kind of a summary of your findings during the time that you both collectively explored an issue in the committee and bring a summary of the findings. Uh, and then let the council frankly debate that in open public and see if from that point, we could get to a policy. Vice Mayor Keating.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Arredondo Savage, you know, is mostly correct in what I'm thinking here. And obviously this is a specific example because I don't know how else to, to, to express my concerns about this direction. You know, we have effectively nine months to come to an agreement on, on 10B pre. And I suspect that, you know, me and Councilmember Arredondo's vision for 10B pre is probably not a hundred percent aligned, and I'm hoping that it will be someday. But the fact of the matter is, is we're up against the clock. So I would like to start working with staff on specific policy so that we don't run out of time here, you know, to get 10B pre, you know, in a, in a position where, where I would like it to be. So like, if we say like, we have to have X amount of meetings where you disagree, like we have to bring it up and we just say, okay, we disagree and move on. Like, how many meetings is that? Like, if we know we're going to disagree, we only had one meeting on the topic and I don't know exactly how far away we are because we haven't had those discussions yet. We're just starting those discussions. But my worry is if we set some sort of artificial, it's X amount of meetings, it's five meetings that you guys, you guys don't agree on it, then you can bring it to work study session. And I'm worried that we have to have those, say it's only two meetings, say it's three, we have those meetings. So that's three months away, you know? So now we're in, we're hitting January here for the work study session to say, now I come back to the council and say, this is the policy I want to see. Councilmember Arredondo Savage can say, this is the policy she wants to see. The staff can work on those different policies to come back to the full council. I just think it'd be more helpful if we're able to kind of sort of frame crafting policy while we know we may or may not disagree. And again, we're not there yet. I mean, me and Robin have worked very well together for five years, but I'm just trying to think in the long term. And it's specifically because we're really up against the clock on what is a very, very important issue to me. Thank you.
I, I, yeah, Vice Mayor, I think that's a really good point. And, you know, I wasn't even thinking timing into it. And, you know, that makes sense and something that we certainly need to consider and whatever that looks like. So we don't run up against the clock. And I think especially if our committees are bringing things to the council that impacts the budget, we know how much we despise having things come like at the last minute. So I certainly support whatever steps we need to take to ensure that doesn't happen and that we have good direction or at least the opportunity to have that discussion in a timely matter. So yeah, I, I, I hear what you're saying and I, I understand what your thoughts are. So you know, hopefully maybe Keely, if you think about what that looks like and incorporate those concerns into what comes out of this discussion, I think that's very valid, very valid point, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And to that point, and this is for Keely and Andrew. I know the city of Phoenix has some rule where a council member can spend X amount of staff time without consensus of the council. I don't, I don't know exactly how many hours that is. That might be something we want to consider too. Just be like, hey, I could, I could get, you know, my assistant, you know, to work with legal or, you know, or, um, you know, human services or whatever to kind of work on a policy for X amount of time. Um, and then after that time limit is done, then have to come back to either the committee or the full council. I just, I just want to make sure that the ball is rolling in, in a positive direction and we're not like stopped at these individual hurdles because again, as, as you know, I pointed out and you understand, you know, we're really up against the clock on some of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, to the last point by Vice Mayor Keating. Uh, once an item is on an agenda or a work plan of a committee, it would be my expectation and my, my understanding that the council aide and any affected staff would already be empowered to work with members of the, that committee to prepare those items to come for future committee agendas. So that authorization to me, and I'm trying to analogize this in my brain a little bit with what the former working group process was, is that if council approves the work plan and the items are already on there, then there's already consensus for these items to be developed for the eye towards potentially making a policy recommendation. So, you know, in, I, I understand that Phoenix may set time limits to that and there may be some time limits we won't want to discuss as staff in consultation with one or both committee members, but in order to have that come in a state in order to, you know, to have those conversations and to give the committee what they need to make a decision, I'm hopeful that that's already something that would occur. Now, I understand that some of that may be prefatory and you may bring it up for the purpose of having a discussion first and want, you know, experts in the field or other people to come to the committee meeting. But all along, staff should be working with the aide assigned to it to try to make sure that whatever information council, those council members need for their committee to give it a full consideration is actually occurring.
Okay. Let's see if I can try to find a way to kind of wrap this item up a little bit. Keely, you know, I just want to kind of go back with you and just sort of see what you've heard and if you feel like you've got enough direction to go forward if we need to keep discussing.
Well, I've heard that people are okay with you being counted for quorum. Uh, but however, they don't want you to be a voting member, no offense. And that we should have a process by which there is some documented work by the council committee on an issue. And if it gets to the point where there's not a recommendation because of a lack of consensus between the two members, it would move forward to a work study session with, you know, noted as not having a recommendation from the council committee. And that process, I, I am honestly, I am still struggling with how to quantify that process because, you know, I understand council member Keating's concern since I know you have to have ballot language for something. If you want to do something like that approved by like March or April and the budget issues or even before that. So I, I mean, I was thinking maybe two meetings, like that has to have been considered for two meetings, but then I've heard people say they don't want a number of meetings. So I, I don't. We can keep trying to work on something that, you know, feels like it quantifies that serious consideration by the council committee before it moves forward. But if anybody has any specific ideas they want to throw out, I'm happy to write them down.
To that point, to that point, Keely, I do have a specific idea. Maybe, maybe we set a, a a, a hard limit on the number of meetings in which there's disagreement, but there's also the option, as Councilmember Arredondo Savage said, we're all adults here. Like we can say, look, we're not going to agree on this. We don't have to have two more meetings. We bring it up only to say no to each other before taking it to the full council. But if, if for some reason someone doesn't want to do that, then after, you know, maybe it's two or three meetings, um, then it will automatically go to the full council if one council member wants that.
Keely, any thoughts about that?
Um, I think, I think that's sort of in line with what I was thinking in terms of there being. Well, I think you could do that two ways. One, have the hard limit meeting of, you know, like it has to, if it's considered twice and there's no consensus, it moves forward automatically. Or if you decide to vote as a consensus, that you're not going to have a consensus and allow it to move forward even before the two meetings. I mean, that could be a way to address it too, is that you just agree. This is not something we're going to come to consensus on. I don't know. I'm struggling with it a little bit, but we can work on it. I might have some more creative minds out there.
Okay. Let me go to Councilmember Garland.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Um, I appreciated what Vice Mayor Keating had said in pulling together what Councilmember Robin Arredondo said. But I, I think for me, it's at least not one meeting where it's presented because what, what I would not want to see is that I would bring something to my committee meeting that Joel's not going to agree with. And we were sitting at the one meeting and we're not, we're not coming to consensus on it. I'm like, okay, well, let's just move it to work study. Let's just move it on as, as not being a consensus. I think we need to put a little bit more effort into it on, on the part of whoever feels like they need to, to try to convince or, or, or talk to their committee co-chair. I just don't think that it's something that we would, that we should look at just once. I would just say, just for me at least, it's just not just one meeting. I think we need to work a little bit harder and on, on that issue. So thanks.
Um, Mr. Mayor, why don't I just, if anybody has some ideas for this, and I will go back and listen to the recording of specifically what Councilmember Arredondo Savage said, because I feel like I maybe just didn't capture it in my notes well. Um, it will work on, I'll just work with staff. We'll come back with something to propose to you as, um, you know, a way to address this, just so we're not stuck on it.
Yeah, I, I like that. I mean, look, at a 30,000 foot level, I think we've definitely got consensus that, you know, we, we all, I think basically said, we don't want ideas to just simply die in committee. So I mean, so how we get to that place, I guess we, you know, we don't need to iron at all the details today. But at least at a, at a very high level, you know, we've made the determination that, you know, we're not just going to let things go to a one, one tie and then they're just dead. We're going to find a way to get those items to the work study and the rest of this sort of comes down to details, which we can let you work out, um, you know, with the rest of the team.
Okay. That's fine with me if that's fine with you guys.
Okay, everyone, everyone okay?
All right. So that was the, I think that was the first slide on issues. It's going to be a long day. Slide eight. Um, so the next area of discussion regarding, is regarding council committee jurisdiction, especially when it comes to new issues that are coming up since the initial work plans were created. Um, the first issue is overlapping jurisdiction. So if an issue could potentially fall within the jurisdiction of two council committees and members of both committees want to have it under their work plan, which council committee is given jurisdiction? A specific example that's come up was a discussion of the eviction prevention issue and, and measures that the city was taking to address that during COVID. Our staff recommendation would just be to allow the mayor to decide which council committee issue it's assigned to. I'll just go over the other one too, so you can talk about the other.
I can go around quickly and get you consensus on that one if you want. I'm fine with that. If everybody wants me just to, you know, be the tiebreaker in that situation, I'm happy to do it. But, uh, you know, I'll let you, but Councilmember Garland, go for it.
Okay, let's not call it a tiebreaker because we're going to go back to the last discussion we had or the last slide. But I, I do agree with this staff recommendation that it should just go to you and you can just decide where you'd like it to sit.
I agree, Mayor.
I, me too, Mayor. I'm good with that.
Sounds good. All right. Anyone else? Sounds good. It's something we got consensus on that item. I guess Keely, you're on to the next one.
Okay. Um, the next one is a similar issue, hopefully easy. Um, we've had a few new issues that come up that aren't really covered by any jurisdiction of the existing council committees. Probably the best example is the city property naming change process, um, and also the board and commission reforms. Um, and we've sort of gone round and round about whether those should be assigned to a committee and they've ended up taking other paths. And as such, I think especially because of how much you already have on your work plans, staff's recommendation is that we assess these issues on a case by case basis and we utilize the work study session process as an alternative to assigning those kind of broader issues that are outside of the existing jurisdiction to a council committee.
Okay. Sounds good. Uh, Councilmember Navarro.
I agree with that.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilmember Garland?
I agree with that also. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Me too, Mayor.
I'm good.
All right. Sounds good. We got consensus on that item.
I'm good, Mayor.
All right. Excellent.
Look at this, running through. Okay. Um, the X, the next issue clarifying scope. We don't, we, we have some draft language for the rules that we think will address this. Um, the existing council committee rules state that work plans will focus on issues around quote, specific or proposed city performance measures. But it's our understanding that really a broader scope exists, allowing for new issues. Uh, and that was what was intended for council committees. And certainly some council committees are taking a broader scope. So we just recommended that we change the rules language to reflect this. Um, so we have developed a draft language that would add flexibility in the rules to broaden the scope and allow items aligned with quote strategic council priorities to also be within the jurisdiction of council committees. And we just want to make sure, see if that was okay with you.
All right, council, comments, input?
Mayor, I kind of think we should stay in our lane.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilmember Garland?
I, I guess I would just like a little bit more clarification. So what, what we're saying is that with the work plans that we already have set are set up to attach to the performance measures that we have. And now we want to just say that any strategic council priority that's in our 12-page priority book is open to be grabbed by any council committee to work on. Is that, is that right? I'm sorry. I'm trying to understand.
Well, I think, and again, I wasn't here for the conversation, but I think that what's in the actual rules is pretty narrow in that the jurisdiction is supposed to be focused around specific or proposed performance measures. Um, but that the intent from the conversations you had, and if you look at everyone's work plans, I mean, some people have a more narrow approach than others. But it is broader than that. You know, there are new ideas being talked about that might necess not, aren't, you know, aren't specifically around an existing performance measure. So the way to address that is we just thought we should put in the rules that the jurisdiction is a, that, that the committees are allowed to look at any issues that align with strategic council priorities. Um, even if there's not a performance measure that already exists or a specific performance measure that's being proposed. Because that way it still stays focused on things that the council has decided should be priorities, but it allows a little more leeway to maybe be creative about what kind of issues you want to talk about or have updates on, or even bring forward as policy initiatives. They don't have to align specifically with performance measures. I mean, that seems to be how they're already functioning at some level, at least some of the committees. Um, so we just wanted to make sure we were allowing there to be enough flexibility for the, the committees to function as they currently are.
Sounds good. Let me go to Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Well, I just want to thank Councilmember Garland because I kind of had the same questions. I'm still not really sure specifically what you're asking here, Keely. My, I, I guess I'm just going to look at it as, you know, what my expectations are. And, you know, my expectations would be that, you know, we don't want the, the committees to just be able to work on whatever it is that they want to work on. I, I, I like the idea that we're working on things that do align with our strategic priorities. I think that's really important. And that if we are creating something different or new, that's not currently a strategic priority, maybe how it would roll into one or impact one. But I, I honestly am not really sure specifically what you're asking for, what really the necess, why we necessarily want to change what we're doing. Um, just because I feel like we just gave the mayor the authority to, to talk about items and where they go. And how, how is that all kind of intertwining together? So I, I'm a little confused.
I guess what I'm saying is we're not asking to change what you're doing. We're asking to align the rules to reflect what you're doing. So that the councils aren't, the council committees aren't working outside of what the rules allow their jurisdiction to be.
Well, wouldn't the, does the, well, okay. So who does the checks and balances in regards to what the intent of that committee particularly is? If, if we've got new items, I mean, and it's going through the mayor and the mayor kind of assigns them. And if maybe we, are you just saying that the, the committees just bring up ideas and then they start talking about them without any checks and balances as to what they're discussing or researching?
I think different committees operate different ways. And if the chairs both want to allow a, a topic to be added to an agenda, you know, they do that. And not all of them are directly aligned to a performance measure. Um, but you could make the case that it's, you know, related to something that's a council priority. And I, and, and not, recommendations aren't necessarily coming out of those presentations. Often no recommendations are coming out of those presentations. It's more of just sort of informational. But it is outside of something that's a specific performance measure. So again, I think our, our goal was just to try to align the rules to be more broad so that the, the count, the committees could just be already doing what they're doing. And it's just, there's nobody who says, hey, these you're outside of your jurisdiction here. It's probably not that big a deal if people want to just not address it, but it was something that, that we kind of have grappled with a bit as we've tried to figure out how to staff these and, um, and give advice on whether or not it's appropriate to put certain agenda items on.
Okay, I got you. Well, I, I, I don't even know if it was this item. I'm getting confused now. But I say, as, as a committee member and somebody that's been on a few different committees, we need to stay in our lanes. And I, I don't know how we do checks and balances to determine what those lanes are. Um, but I don't want it to be, you know, open range that we have the ability to pick and choose different things that are outside of our lane that could really fall into somebody else's purview with their committee. Um, I don't have an issue if there's something that once we want to discuss and maybe. I don't have an issue if there's something that once we want to discuss, and maybe, you know, through the mayor, however that goes, who determines where it goes, right? I think that's kind of what you're getting at, is, is not necessarily, we're not going to talk about it, but who's going to be talking about it. So, I support making sure we stay in our lanes. And however you can ensure that we do that, I will support your suggestion. There you go.
All right, I appreciate that. I think item one, that we talked about, who gets to assign overlapping, that will help a lot with that.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, and I'm going to, Councilmember Navarro, that was my perspective as well, is that I think that the way, and I don't want to, I'm not, you know, I, I've only been to one of the committee meetings, and I've not, you know, talked to staff about a lot of what goes on behind the scenes here. But I guess my perspective is always, I guess I've kind of figured I would have to kind of troubleshoot and maybe put out a fire if someone brought one to me. But given that, you know, I haven't had a council member who's come to me during the committee meeting process, the main concerns I had heard were about things getting basically stopped in committee. But in terms of the concern about, you know, people kind of stepping outside of their scope or taking on things that they shouldn't, I hadn't heard that was an issue necessarily. So, I mean, it seems to me that maybe, as you said, Keely, the, the matter of me being able to, you know, council members having approved work plans, and, and also, you know, you know, me being able to also kind of do some of the assigning work, whatever, might from, you know, might address a lot of what you're getting at here. I mean, but maybe it doesn't. I'm not, I'm not sure.
One more thing, if that's okay, if you don't mind. And I, I, Keely, I kind of, I, like I said, I'm going to go back to, I think it's really important that we stay in our lanes. And I think our, our council aides have done a really good job of helping us be prepared and getting the right information and keeping us organized. So, maybe we can utilize them to just make sure that we are staying in our lane, and if there's an issue. I don't want to put them in a bad spot, though, because I am very cautious of ensuring that, you know, we aren't putting anybody in a bad spot. But if there is an issue, maybe they can go to you, and then you can work through that with the mayor. But I would entrust that you guys can come up with some process that, you know, might raise a red flag and say, hey, this, this may be out of your lane. Let's figure out where it might fit a little bit better. I'm totally fine with that, whatever that looks like.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Let me next go to Councilmember Navarro.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. No, I, I kind of agree. I kind of want things to be simple, so to speak. Stay in your lane, stay within the area of your committee. If it's something that's outside of anybody's committee, but someone wants to explore it, you know, there's an option, bring it to the work-study group, and that can be, you know, you know, issued to whatever group needs to take a look at it. Or it's a, or not a session, which we call it a, a, a issue review type of deal that can be brought up there too. So, yeah, I agree, just kind of stay in your lanes, keep it very simple. Try to stay within the parameters of what your committee is about. If there is, after your year of looking at our committees, and there's a need for something else, we can make an adjustment then. But for now, I think that we need to stay within our lanes. There's enough work, I would imagine, for everyone here after, for this year to next year, to evaluate, to see what else needs to be maybe tweaked or adjusted. So, that's my opinion.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Next up, let me go to Vice Mayor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I already said that I think we should stay in our lanes, but I want to make a, a subsequent point on this, is that I don't believe it should be the mayor or staff to make the decision whether or not a particular issue is within that committee's purview. I do think it should come back to the full council. Again, this is in the philosophy of not being a tiebreaker, not being a judge or harbiter. So, if there is some sort of controversy on what, you know, what constitutes what, as far as committees go, I think the full council should, should make that decision. Thank you.
I'm totally fine with that, Vice Mayor. If we want to bring those items that are kind of up for debate a little bit, back to the full group, so we can all kind of weigh in, I have no problem with that at all.
Great, thank you.
I agree with the Vice Mayor.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember QB. Everybody else agree with Vice Mayor Keating, that if we, if there are issues about what should be on a work plan, that we would come back and discuss them as a full group?
I agree with that. I think, isn't that, I think what we're doing right now, but I would, I would agree with that. So, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I agree with that, Mayor. That's exactly what we're doing right now.
Sounds good. Okay. Perfect. Sounds good. Well, Keely, sounds like we've got consensus on that item as well. Anything else?
Um, okay, well, the last, so do you, do you want us to just not add the language, or do you want us to add the language? I'm really not clear, because I feel like people weren't quite sure why we were adding the language, but I didn't really hear what they thought in the end.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm a no.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say no too. I think we already have it set as it is. I, I, I don't want to tweak it, I think.
Okay, so Vice Mayor Keating and Councilmember Navarro are no's on that. Anyone else want to weigh in?
Hi, this is Councilmember Guard. I think, I think, I said, I think what we're saying with this is that it's a no, and we're going to kind of leave it the way that it has been, if there is something that's outside that area that we bring it to the council to vote on. So, I'm a no. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Anyone else?
It's Lauren. I'm a no as well.
Okay, sounds good. Well, sounds like we've got consensus on that item too.
Okay, then moving on, the current council committees have had, like I said, three to six meetings each, and have about seven to eight meetings left through June 2022. And there's, and, you know, and we're saying through June 22, because if you had items that you wanted the whole council to consider, would have to go to a work-study session, and June's your last date to do that. So, if council committees want to prioritize pending issues on their work plans, especially those that have to go to the full council for action during those remaining meetings, I guess staff is just wanting to make sure everybody understands that short timeframe, and want to make sure that we are able to assist you in that effort. I know one committee already did strategic planning. Maybe the others think that might be a worthy thing to consider if they, they think that they're running short on time. We don't really have staff recommendation on this. We just want to advise that the council committee members discuss strategies amongst themselves, if not as a group, to address this issue of prioritization of work plans since time is starting to run short. So, what can staff do to help with this, I guess, is our question.
Okay, thank you, Keely. So, you're basically just saying that, like, you know, people need to understand that there's sort of nine months left on the current committees, and that, and then, you know, we have to kind of figure out what a, you know, how a, what a prioritization looks like of the items?
Yeah, and yes, and there's really only, you know, seven to eight meetings that you can have during that time, you know, with the timeframes of the holidays and, and the ability to take an item to work-study session for it to actually move forward. And I think we're just at staff, staff level, just getting a little concerned that you've got a lot on your work plans. And maybe you all realize that and don't, you know, realize you're not going to get it all done. But I think now's the time to really decide what are the couple, three things that are the most important, and let's make sure that we're, you know, planning your agendas around those issues to make use of the time as effectively as you can. Just a reminder that time is short.
Okay, sounds good. I'm going to go to Vice Mayor Keating in a second, but just want to, want to make one quick comment. I guess, you know, I mean, now that we've sort of talked about the duration of these council committees, and that they'll be in place until the end of June, my perspective would be, would be in, you know, incumbent upon each committee to make the determination about how they want to prioritize their items, knowing that, as Vice Mayor Keating talked about earlier, there's a clock ticking on these things. And so, it's just a matter of figuring out what you want to prioritize and push to the top, and what things might be able to be pushed down a little bit or eliminated altogether. But I would primarily just leave that up to the council committee to let them make the determination of what they think is best. But I'll go to Vice Mayor Keating.
No, Mayor, you said exactly what I was going to say. At first, I thought our chief of staff was asking for some direction on what, on what should, what should be prioritized. But yeah, I was just going to suggest, hey, let's let the committees figure that out for themselves, and, you know, they, they will utilize the time for the policies they, they want to see come to fruition before the end of their, their terms.
Sounds, Keely?
No, my point was more just to make sure you all had that. I think on the behalf of staff, that all of you were just thinking about prioritization. And of course, we're here to help. However you want us to help you do that, like I said, one committee did a facilitated strategic planning session. That's not the only way to do it, but, you know, whatever you need from us, we just wanted this to be at the forefront of your mind as you think about the next few months.
Okay, so you're saying you're, you're not really looking for direction on this item, you're just, you know, it was just sort of an alert, more or less?
Right, correct.
Okay.
Sorry.
I still see.
I misunderstood. My mistake.
I misunderstood as well. So, okay. Um, Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
I, yeah, that was good clarification. So, thank you, Keely, for that. I think we can be responsible and do that. Even though I think you're just trying to highlight the facilitated committee that obviously you're very proud of. And I don't know, I feel like you're shaming me just a little bit.
No, not at all. It wasn't my idea, it was Tim's idea, so we'll give him credit.
Well, you know what, and I think that brings up another thing too, is, is, like, I mentioned it before. I mean, our council aides are really important in this process, and certainly do appreciate them. And I'll just give a shout out to Alex Chin and the work that he's done for, for Randy and I, just kind of keeping us together. And, and I do think too, it would be great if we, the, you know, the three of us can really work together, and he can kind of help us ensure that if there are things that especially impact the budget, that we make sure that those are prioritized, and, you know, we empower them to help us just be the best that we can be as a committee. So, thank you for that, Mayor. I appreciate that. And thank you, Keely.
Thank you so much. Keely, anything else?
Not on this issue. Do you want to move to the next slide?
Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember QB.
I do want to talk about something, and, you know, this is a retreat, and so we're really delving deep, so I do want to mention it. And, but we brought up, you know, the timing of this, of the committee's actions. And last time there was contention, you know, frankly, when Jennifer and I brought forward an issue that was thought to be 11th hour, and it was actually, it was a committee cat thing, not going to talk about cats, but it was March 18th, right? So, that was a good time, I thought, before the budget, and since we don't do supplemental budgets. So, somewhere there needs to be clarity that if a working, if a council committee is going to be bringing forward something as a budget request, that there'd be given, you know, a timeframe so that they don't get caught in that charge, which, I mean, I think March was pretty early. But we need to be able to understand, and not, since we're only in operation for a year essentially, what the timeframes are for budget submission. Not supplementals, but budget submission through the committees. So, that has to be, we don't need to answer that tonight, today, but we need to get clarity on that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember QB. Anyone else?
All right, I was going to move to the next issue, if you guys are ready for that. I have Tiana Yi should be getting on with us here from the Public Information Office. And we're going to turn the presentation over to her for a few minutes to go over the activities that the public information officers are engaged in to promote the work of the council committees. They're actually outlined in your packet in the council committee discussion document on pages two and three, but they do good work for us, and so we wanted them to have a chance to highlight those and hear any questions or feedback you have directly. So, Tiana, are you available?
I am. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Tiana Yi, and I am a Public Information Officer with Communication and Media Relation. Before we started promoting the council committees, our team met with the council aides to develop a process that was designed to be consistent across the board. September represents the fourth month of committee meetings. In the fourth month, our two teams have been working together to refine the process. As with all of our outreach, we aim to be accurate, timely, and engaging. So, for the meetings, our process includes a news release about a week prior to the first meeting date. It would include all three meetings, and it'll preview the meeting topics. And we would send it to a dedicated email list posted on our homepage, as well as in our newsroom. We would also include it in the calendar section of our weekly roundup email. Do individual posts on Facebook, Twitter, Nextdoor, about three to five days prior to the meeting, highlighting the meeting topics. And we would do a Twitter post the day of. After the meetings are completed, they will be posted on the Tempe 11 YouTube channel. And we would do a post-release that calls out specific meeting elements and includes links to the recorded meetings. Other communication could include Tempe Today articles, inclusion in the city's Wrangler page, facility reach screens in Tempe 11 sites, and regular inclusion and neighborhood services emails to Neighborhood Association and HOA chairs. We also have processes in place for canceled meetings, any issues that need public or council input, and any committee's success story. So, we know that council members play an important role in amplifying the media information. So, we do encourage council members as well as aides to share the city's social posts, include details in your newsletters, and share information via word of mouth. And we are always looking to refine the process, so we do welcome any suggestions you may have.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Any members of council, any comments or questions, discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember QB.
And it's about, you know, there are times where, you know, we're all so busy that I don't think, oh, I wish this commission member had been at the meeting or that commission chair. So, and ideally, we want it like the sustainable, liberal communities. We'd like to have this, someone from the Sustainability Commission there all the time. But that started to happen, but it's kind of dropped off, and I'm not sure if that's our role, Jennifer, my, my role, to make sure that happens, or if that could just be more formally set up. Maybe it's with the, the staff liaison to the commission that we're, we're aligned with, you know. But I have seen that sort of drop off over the course of the past few months. And I do think it's important, if you have a commission that directly relates to your work committee, that there'd be some connection there. I think will strengthen our engagement with the committees, with the commissions, I should say.
Okay.
Perhaps that staff should be doing, maybe staff should be doing that. In our case, it'd be, you know, Kristen or Alex is just trying to ensure that at least there's an invite to the commission member, commission, and they just, they decide who is going to be sent each time, but that there'd be this understanding, we'd like to have somebody there and present.
Hey, thank you, Councilmember QB. Other council members, comments or questions?
I can't, Mayor, this is Councilmember Garland.
Yes.
Hi, um, so, a couple of this is, is in relation to this, under the PIO, there, on the information that we received. So, there's a couple of issues related to public involvement. On there, they were specifically talking about, you know, do we do a hybrid or not do a hybrid? Are we going to go, did you want to go to specifically those questions, if I can give you answers?
I will, I'll, I'll take back over. I just wanted to get Tiana's, if you needed anything specifically for what Tiana talked about.
Okay, no, I just, I would then just like to say, I, Tiana, I think you guys have done a great job, and I really appreciate the work that you put into promoting our events. And I just have to say, on a separate note, seeing your bright smiley face and the sunshine that you give us when we're at the vaccination clinics is absolutely incredible. I think you do a great job. I'm so glad that you were there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll move forward if you're ready for that.
Yes, go ahead.
So, back to the bullets here, the second bullet, hybrid, hopefully this is a quick one too. We, staff would just recommend that we conduct the council committees, we continue to conduct them hybrid, in a hybrid way, even after we go back to in-person meetings. So, we just wanted to see if, if that was allowable and for us to plan for that.
Sounds good, Keely. I'm fine with that. Council, do you have any comments?
Mayor, this is Councilmember Garland again. I'm, I'm good with that. I think it is good to be consistent with how we are doing our council meetings and our work-study sessions, for our committee meetings to be consistent with that also. So, I'm good with the hybrid.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Any other council members, any input, feedback for Keely?
Okay, and then the last issue, Councilmember QB sort of touched on it, that we were asking for, we were suggesting a little bit broader conversation than just inviting them. We have had a few board and commission members attend and even participate in a couple of meetings. And the participation of board and commission members is allowable by rule, certainly as a member of the public through comment cards, but they also could be listed on the agenda and not only be presenters, but be participants and discuss items along with the council members. They just have to be posted on an agenda as having that role in that particular meeting. So, as some of you know, I've also been working with a work group on board and commission reforms, and there have been some ideas raised about potentially adding members of council, members of boards and commissions to council committees as sort of non-voting members to have regular conversations with you, or inviting them to just give regular updates on their work to the council committees of appropriate jurisdiction, just so that they have a place to come and have a place that they regularly interact with council members and tell you what they're working on. Again, I know your work plans are really busy, you don't have a lot of time, but it might be something to consider. But we wanted to raise these two ideas with you without any particular recommendation, but they're just presented for discussion and consideration of engaging the board and commission members in a more formal way as part of the council committees.
Thank you, Keely. I'm going to go to Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really, really like the idea of adding the commission, board and commission members to be more involved in our participation on our committees. So, I'm in really big support of that. So I'm in really big, uh, support of that. I also want to get us back to in-person meetings as, as soon as it is safe to do so. I think it's really important that we get back out in front of, um, our, our community and, uh, but I, uh, just want to really, really support boards and commission members be, having more involvement. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Let me go next to Vice Mayor Keating.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Adams. You know, I would like to see relevant board and commission members invited to, to all of our committee meetings, you know, give maybe quarterly updates or, you know, biannual updates, or I don't know how that would work. Uh, I would stop short of adding them to the commission itself, or the committee itself. But certainly if they want to be more participatory, participatory in the process through updates and attending meetings, providing feedback, you know, I'm all for that. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. Let me next go to, uh, Councilmember Garland.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I, um, I love the idea of including our boards and commissions. This is one of the things that I brought up at our, um, retreat last year, um, is having them be a part of this. And I really think that having them give reports, I mean, I'm just thinking of all, I'm looking at four of the commissions, that would be great that we could have report to our, um, our committee. And I don't want to speak for Joel, but I, I think this is a great idea. Um, so thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Next up, Councilmember Navarro.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I remember being on the Human Relations Commission and just kind of wondering what effectiveness, you know, we are having with council and being able to interact at a committee level with council members. I think that would be huge. And, uh, actually, it probably get, um, some people, I would imagine, a little bit more excited in what they're doing, knowing that they're actually feeling like their voices are being heard in some form or fashion besides at a meeting, being recognized, um, you know, maybe once or twice a year, to be frank. Uh, so I, I definitely agree on that. I, I also go one step is, is this is, yeah, they're invited to any meeting they'd want to go to on their own. I mean, we do technically monthly meetings, but maybe, uh, quarterly or twice a year, uh, they have a posted, you know, the come on into the meeting if you can make it type of thing, more of a, not a mandate, but more of a, of a inclusiveness that they're really invited, uh, to give a report out of what they're working on or anything like that. So, um, I would kind of, it's like a kind of a hybrid, so to speak, if you will. That is all in my comments.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Uh, let me go to Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I, I think anything that we can do to get our, our commission members more involved in regards to what's happening in the city is, at a higher level, that would be great. I think that's, would be really important. I like Vice Mayor's idea about maybe sending them an update or like a newsletter, whether it's, you know, quarterly or something like that, or just some things that are happening in the city. I, I think that would be kind of cool. And just to really open those lines of communication between, uh, the board and commission members and the city council. So however we can do that, I know we've tried, I know Andrew has been working on this for a while, about trying to figure out, uh, you know, some type of matrix that was similar. So, you know, there was, they were all fairly addressed, and they could bring their information and, you know, the things that they're working on, that they're so excited about, um, to the council and to the public. And if we can, uh, help facilitate that, absolutely, I want to ensure that we do that. So I, I'm very open. I like the idea and the thought. So let's, let's, let's make it happen.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. I agree as well. I think this is a great idea, and I'd love to move forward. So, sounds like we've got consensus on this item.
Okay, great. All right. So moving forward to the last of my issues, there's one more after this, but getting close. Um, this is not really an issue that, um, I, we need the council to give us any direction on, and there's no staff recommendations really to make. But I did just want to take a minute to, uh, as the supervisor of the employees who staff your council committees, to just make sure you all had a clear picture of what work they're doing to support the committees. And this information isn't being shared to complain or criticize. Our staff, I think, are happy to work on the committees, and some have expressed a lot of enjoyment in taking on some of these new tasks and policy-oriented work that they typically don't necessarily work on. Um, and so they do believe also that they can manage the additional duties associated with staffing the committees along with their other work responsibilities. But there are some changes to this process, um, from the work group process that does sort of add workload, um, one being the open meeting law requirements. Um, a major difference between the work group system and the council committees is that council committees are subject to the open meeting law, and that requires certain tasks to be completed with strict timelines. And so at times, the focus and prioritization of staff have to specifically be on those tasks in order to meet those timelines. And then under the workload, they're doing a lot behind the scenes to get ready for your meetings, to get presenters invited and, uh, hooked up technologically to get, make sure their presentations are complete, make sure it looks professional for you, uh, that there's PowerPoints and scripts and everything ready, and then actually conducting the meeting and taking and posting meeting notes. And so obviously, again, stuff everybody is happy to do, and I think has figured out a way to, to make time for in their, their regular duties. But sometimes those issues just require prioritization because of the timeframes related to getting these council committees, uh, agendized, you know, set up, actually running them, and then the minutes posted. And then the last thing that's kind of, um, evolved out of this, it's a little unusual, is that because the council aides are working with two members on each committee, one member not being someone who's already assigned to them, they actually work quite a lot with a member, a new member to their, to their kind of team. And sometimes they're doing work for that member because, um, that's part of the council committee requirements that are needed. And, uh, again, not raising that as a complaint, but I just want to make sure since, um, when you all became council members and were given a staff aide, your expectation was that this person worked for you and one other person, that it has been an added kind of component of their work to be working closely with other council members at times on, on certain tasks and, and, um, activities. And I think everybody's handled this in a very professional way. But again, I just wanted to make sure in the effort, you know, in the interest of full disclosure, that all of you knew that and that you were comfortable with it. So just to wrap up, the intent of this portion of the presentation is just to make you aware of those added responsibilities and, um, and just at times, sometimes be sensitive to the time requirements around it, uh, when they're juggling all of this with the, with the work they do for you, for you on a day in and day out basis. So that was my only comment there. I didn't know if anybody had any questions or comments, but, um, it really wasn't seeking any kind of direction or, uh, or recommendations. I just wanted to make sure everybody had a chance to, to talk about that, if they had any concerns there.
Thank you, Keely. I'm going to go to Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Keely, for bringing this up. I mean, I think it's really important, and I want to say it's been kind of nice because, oh, I'm sorry, Tim, I'm not trying to undermine you by any way. Of course, I do believe, uh, that you are very valuable to, uh, my success, Joel's success as being our council aide, and have certainly appreciated it, and haven't really felt, um, any concerns about your work, uh, working on, on the council committee that you do and, and think that you're, you've done a really great job of being able to manage both. And so I certainly do appreciate that. And I know that it's not easy. And just a great appreciation to Alex and what he brings to the table. And it's been kind of nice, too, just to get to know Alex, um, a little bit differently in being able to work with him. So I've kind of appreciated the fact that I think that we've spread out just a little bit. And, and I certainly understand and respect the fact that, you know, you've got a couple hats and trying to do everything. And, and Tim, I just want to say thank you for what you do. I think you've balanced things really well. And, um, I'm, I'm really grateful, and I do appreciate the work that Alex has brought to our committee. I think he continues, like I said before, to really keep us organized, keep us forward-thinking, keep us on track. And, um, and I'm really grateful for that, too. So I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, Keely. I, I understand that, um, sometimes we kind of forget about our council aides and the work that they do, and how many directions that they're pulled. And I just want to take a second to say thank you, guys, all of three of you, for what you do. It really does mean a lot. And, um, I have thoroughly enjoyed working with all of you and, and appreciate the value that you really bring to this Tempe team. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Let me next go to Councilmember Navarro.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. No, I, Councilmember, uh, Arredondo Savage said it right there. And then, you know, I guess I could add the other thing, uh, you know, once again, uh, we are a city that's getting more complex every day and, uh, increasing population and demand and i-issues that come up. And, um, I'll say, and I've always said it, you know, having individual aides is going to be an asset one day down the road and something we have to consider. So that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Next up, let me go to Councilmember Adams.
I agree with, uh, what Councilmember Arredondo said and, and Councilmember Navarro. I, uh, our aides are awesome, and they do a great job. And, yeah, and just really appreciate all their help. And I do think that with the city, as it's growing, it's not what it, obviously, it's a lot bigger than it used to be, and, and it's evolved a lot. I think we need to look down the road at having everybody have their own aide, because it's, I think, becoming too much of a burden for them to share, uh, council members. So I would be supportive of that in the future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Let me go to Councilmember Garland.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. I love our aides. I think I have worked with them or, um, bugged them all at different times. And I really appreciate how responsive all of our aides seem to be and how they, um, really value the, or, you know, set up with the values of the city of Tempe and how important they have been to all of us. I think, I can say as a, as a new council member, I think what would be really helpful, I liked this description that Keely put together on the duties and the things that the council aides do. You know, as a new council member, um, you don't know exactly what you can and you cannot, um, use your aides for, help your, you know, have your aides help you with, you know what. So it'd be nice, um, moving forward, if there was a way that when you had a new council member that come in, you could say, you know, here's, here's the hours that your aide, um, works. And here, and I'm not saying this specifically about any aides, but I think just as a new person, you want to know, am I allowed to call them after 5:00? Can I call them at 10:00 at night? Um, you know, because, you know, I think that would be really helpful. Are they allowed to run errands for you? Are, you know, are they supposed to deliver things to my house? I mean, there's so many things that you think might be happening or not be happening, or you don't know if it's allowed or not allowed. I think when a new council member comes in, I think, and that, you know, it was great when I came in with Kristen, because we had a really, I think it was like a three-hour orientation, really getting to know each other and stuff. And it was awesome. Um, and I just think maybe trying, trying to understand how we use our aides and making sure that we are not abusing them or abusing their time or their personal time. I think they've done so much for the city, and they do so much for all of us. I just want to say thank you to them. Um, and, um, and I completely agree with Councilmember Navarro and Councilmember Adams, that it would be great for us to look at, in the future, the possibility of having our own aide. There is a lot of things that get done, and, um, we, we are growing, and there are more jobs, and there are more things that are coming, going to be coming to us, I think. And I think it would be really helpful to be able to, um, look at the possibility of having our own council aide. So, thank you, Mayor.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Let me go to Councilmember QB.
Thank you. And I know we've taken a turn here a little bit to talk, um, not just about committee staffing, right? It's okay. I hope it's okay with our agenda. Judy can correct me. But, um, we did have a discussion before Keely began, before we even advertised to that position, about maybe having a constituent services slash communications aide, someone that would go to neighborhood meetings, someone that would be their main respondent to, and handle constituent services. And that might relieve the burden upon our aides. So I'm not sure, Keely, if you, I'm not asking you to talk about it now, but maybe that's a topic for a future discussion, um, to know what the thinking is there, because that could relieve the burden. So we wouldn't necessarily have to have one aide per person. Um, I mean, I think a one aide per person would be great, but I just want to throw that out there. Um, and, um, I had something else I'm trying to think about. Oh, okay. So I'm, I'm going to not be a council member in, in a year, right? So I have a freedom to maybe say something that I might not say as a council member, because I might sound self-interested. But I honestly think that the council salary should be raised, and that people should be able to, um, be a full-time council member with their full attention, day in, day out. And, uh, you know how, how much time, how much time it takes up to be an effective council member? And there are other models of other cities in the valley where they are paid more of a living wage, so they can, um, focus completely on being, um, on the council. So I'm just throwing it out there, as long as we're bringing that up as, because it relates directly to staffing as well. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember QB. Let me just say a couple of quick things here. Um, one, I think, uh, you know, first of all, I just, I want to echo what everyone else said about our aides. Uh, they do an, and, and absolutely incredible job each and every day managing, uh, everything from calendars to public policy work to constituent relations. Uh, so they do an incredible job, and I just greatly appreciate them. And I know every other member of the council has said exactly, uh, the same thing. So I know they're all listening, and we want you to know that we really greatly appreciate you. Uh, when it comes to, uh, some of the conversations about, you know, regarding, uh, a different a council aide structure, or even the concept of raising council salaries down the road, uh, those are probably, I think, items, whatever, based on how this has been agendized for a future agenda, which I'm more than happy to agendize along with the, uh, city attorney and city clerk. If council, uh, would like to discuss those items further, uh, probably even when it comes to council aides, that would probably be an executive session item, uh, since that pertains to personnel. Uh, but we can definitely agendize those and have those discussions. I just want to make sure that we stay as close to this agenda item as possible. Uh, Councilmember, uh, let's see, Councilmember Navarro.
Yeah, Mayor, I agree with, uh, Councilmember QB. Um, you know, the complexity of our city, the demands that we have, you know, I, I think if they have to be, this topic has to be agendized, for sure. I think it's something that is time to be discussed. And, uh, I think for the future of other council members coming on to the job and forward, it's, it, it is something that, you know, I think somebody would say, yeah, I would probably step away from what I'm doing right now to put my name in the hat, um, and run for an office. So I definitely think that needs to be discussed.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, Madam City Attorney, I'll just turn to you for one quick second. Uh, can we have a conversation offline about agendizing those items so the council, uh, can have a future discussion?
Certainly. Happy to do that, Mayor.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Anything else on this item? Or, Keely, do you think you have enough direction to go forward? And I want to make sure I didn't miss anything.
Mayor, I'd like, my hands went up. I'd like to say something.
Sorry. All the hands are still up. I'm confused.
Yeah, put your hands down, people.
Clear the board.
I just want to, you know, take the opportunity to publicly thank my aide, Alex. He's fantastic. Um, you know, sometimes I wish he wouldn't text me at 7:30 in the morning. And, um, also, he needs to stop calling me sir. Other than that, you know, he's done an absolutely fantastic job. And, um, he's made, he's made what is a very difficult job just a little bit easier through his diligence and, and hard-working attitude. So, great job, Alex. Really appreciate your help. I was texting him at like 9:30 last night with, with a very important issue, and he got it taken care of. And he just goes above and beyond every single, every single opportunity he gets. So you're doing a great job, Alex. Thank you.
Eric, can I, can I just top that really quick? Because
Yes, please.
I, I did text Tim this morning at 5:25 a.m., and he responded. Bam! What about that? Thank you, Timmy G.
Tim, Tim was up early, because Tim has texted me before at 4:45 in the morning. So.
Aren't, aren't these, I don't know. I think the staff, the council aides are in the union, so you guys might want to.
But if they, but if they initiate it, Keely, that's a whole different issue. So.
That's right. And then they respond back. I mean, come on.
Exactly. Um, let me quickly go to, uh, Councilmember Adams.
Mr. Mayor, I, I also have to, uh, give Alex a huge shout out. He's so good at keeping, um, me organized, which I know is a huge challenge. And, uh, he does such a great job and is, is always there to help and has great solutions. And I just really, really appreciate Alex and all of his hard work. And I'm so glad that Alex is, um, our aide. Huh, Randy?
That's right, Councilmember Adams.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Let me go to Councilmember Garland.
Okay, I just have to one-up all this, because I sent Kristen a text on her vacation and forgot she was on vacation, and she still answered and followed up. And I apologized like crazy. So, Kristen, you rock, girl. Um, but I also want to say, I, you have been saying things about this, Mayor, and I'm sure you know this in your heart, but I think Brianne has been really great to work with. I really appreciate that she is available to, um, kind of help sometimes when I get a little confused in when I'm in the office at the building. And, um, I'm really glad that we have you with us, Keely. So thank you all.
Thank you.
I, 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 I tell, I tell Brianne every day that, uh, that she runs this office. I just simply do what she tells me to do. So, um, and no, I tell her all the time, without her, I would, there's no way I'd be able to do this job, quite honestly. It's a, it's an extremely demanding job with a lot of requests and, uh, you know, people kind of pulling you in multiple different directions. But I mean, quite honestly, without her, uh, I would not be able to show up here every day and do my job. So she's, uh, incredible, as is all, as are all of the aides, and Keely, you as well. Thank you, uh, so much for all of your work and staffing us each and every day.
Okay, we're getting close to the end, at least this section. And I did recommend to the, the Mayor, he'd give you a break. So hopefully that buys me some, some, uh, good fortune, too. Um, all right, we have one last slide. Um, thank you for your dialogue and the direction given on the council committee issues. We'll work with Judy and Elizabeth to get, uh, the draft rules changed and prepared to address those issues that you've given us direction on. And we'll have something available for you at the October, uh, at the October council meeting. Again, it takes two-thirds to. something available for you at the October, at the October council meeting. Again, it takes two-thirds to pass those amendments. If, also, if you have any further thoughts on how to figure out the right way to quantify moving forward with the council committee issue that can't be resolved at the council committee level and needs to go to the work session, study session, I'd be happy to talk with you offline. I appreciate any feedback on that. But moving forward, I want to turn the presentation over to Elizabeth and Judy to review a final, a few final additional rule changes that were in your packet that they would recommend that aren't related to any of the issues we've already talked about today. Hopefully this will be short. And with that, I will turn it over to Elizabeth.
Thanks, Keely. Mayor and council, Elizabeth Higgins with the city attorney's office. I just wanted to draw your attention to some additional changes that were proposed to the rules. There's a number of conforming and clarifying changes in the attachment to the agenda. They were meant to sort of clarify and help just make the process a little bit more clear for the council and the public and the expectations that would go along with those rules. Obviously, some of the, the proposals in here would change based on the direction previously discussed. But I just wanted to see if you had any additional questions, changes, or any comments moving forward. I'll keep it short. So.
Councilmember Garland?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I have, I do have a question on page five of the rules. On number four. It was, it's talking about public appearances is, are calling out to the audience. And it says, it's any members of the public desiring to address the city council during a call, the audience shall be recognized by the chair. Da-da-da-da. And it says, and shall limit their remarks to the items on the agenda. But I thought that at the end of our council meeting, when we go to the public, that they don't have to specifically say something that is on the agenda. It could be about any topic. So would that number four need to be changed to reflect that? Or is that somewhere else? That's my first question.
Sure. So the call to the audience refers to the process that's in the work study where the member of the public is confined to the items that are on the agenda. I did notice on this little section that I should have probably said on a pub, for a public hearing item or a call to the agenda or a call to the audience. But the public appearances that would be part of the regular council meeting that you guys made changes to before, that would not have to be specific to an item being on the agenda. It would just be the call to the audience or a specific public hearing item.
Okay, thank you so much for clarifying that. And the other one is, is just a typo I found and I'll just text to you. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Thank you, Elizabeth. Anyone else? Any comments or questions? Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
No, I appreciate the updates, Mayor, and agree with them. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Anyone else? Comments, questions, or feedback for Elizabeth? All right, here none. Elizabeth, you succeeded in doing such a great job that it was an extremely short presentation. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Keely, I'll turn back to you.
Okay, I think we're done and ready to go to item two unless you wanted to take a break.
All right, let's do this then. It's 3:38. Let's go ahead and take a break till about, let's come back at 3:45. Just take about seven minutes.
Thank you, everyone, for your attention during that section.
Thank you, Keely.
Can I leave my mic on while I take the break?
You can at your own peril.
All right. Enjoy, everyone.
All right, it's now 3:45. Are we all set to go?
Ready on the clerk's end.
All right, let's go ahead and do this. All right. So the next item on the agenda here is economic development, item two, a philosophical approach. And I believe I'll be looking to our economic development director, Donna Kennedy. All right. Let me see, I will, while Donna gets elevated to being a panelist, I will go ahead and do a little kind of introduction here. Just in terms of like, kind of how this item ended up on the agenda. So maybe we can go to the next slide. So one of the things that I'm going to have, you know, Donna kind of, you know, chime in a lot here, but this kind of came about through a conversation that she and I were having at one point about how Donna and her team do an excellent job and just an exceptional job when it comes to, you know, corporate locates, bringing in great projects all the time. There's been so much said that's actually happened to kind of realize the vision of Rio, of the Rio Salado and of Tempe Beach Park with a lot of the developments that have come in. And obviously, so many other things they continue to do to bring in high-quality jobs in corporations that frankly, any city, not just across the country, but across the entire world, would actually want. I mean, so much so, and the council all knows this, the work that Donna and her team are doing and our entire staff that we were actually featured on Jeopardy! last night is the answer to a trivia question. Because that's obviously how well we are doing here. We are clearly the envy of everyone. And that's, and that's largely due to a lot of the work that Donna Kennedy and her team are doing in the economic development to make us such an attractive place to live, work, and raise a family. At the same time though, one of the conversations that Donna and I both had was, is there a way that we could begin to do some more work on a couple of issues, which is one, doing some more things with even more of a neighborhood focus? One of the things that we all kind of regularly see is that we sometimes get, I don't want to say called out, but there's times where things happen where all of a sudden, things that you would think would probably be minor issues. As an example, when there was a car wash being proposed adjacent to the Holdeman neighborhood in the last few months, that became an issue that normally seems like it would be kind of small. It's a, it's a car wash and it doesn't seem like it would be that big of an issue. But to a lot of the residents in that area and in that neighborhood along Broadway Road, that became a really huge source of contention. Largely because that was sort of going into the council's designated Tempe Maker District. We also had a situation, you know, previously last year with a project that came in the Smith Industrial Innovation Hub. And obviously, once again, good project, you know, that we're really excited to have in the city of Tempe. And we're really glad that people continue to make these investments within our city. But at the same time, I know, you know, we also have residents who've said, hey, look, for the, for the Smith Hub of the Maker District, we really would like to see, you know, more, you know, projects with, you know, really sort of interesting backgrounds and stories and kind of more innovation. You know, more affordable and workforce housing options. Sort of a focus and an emphasis on locally homegrown businesses to Tempe and to the greater Phoenix metro area. And so part of what Donna and I discussed was how we could continue to make sure that we are realizing our, our kind of our goals on the, on the Maker District and the Smith Hub. But also talking about, you know, living in a city that's 40 square miles. How do we actually also go about being even more proactive when it comes to, when we're driving around town? And we see the signs, you know, on vacant lots or in front of properties saying for sale. And, and so obviously, you know, we have certain kinds of businesses. The council has a vision for the kinds of businesses, the kinds of housing that we would actually want here in the city. We also have the, the hometown for all program that the council unanimously adopted back in late January of this year to try to find ways to acquire more property for the purpose of actually increasing that affordable and attainable housing stock. Because as we know, we are a landlocked community that can't grow out. So we have to be very mindful and very deliberate about what we actually do put in our city. Because we don't many times get the chances to remake things or just sort of drive further out and build something further out if we want to do something differently. And obviously, you know, we as well talked about, you know, kind of future city of Tempe operational uses. There are needs for, you know, for frankly, for city fleets and for other services that we offer to our residents to continue to give them that high quality of life that they not only expect, but frankly deserve. And so we were talking about this, you know, Donna and I, which is kind of what led to this item being on the, on the retreat agenda this evening, or this afternoon, I should say. I was kind of talking about ways to kind of fulfill that promise when it comes to the Maker District and the Smith Hub, but also for the economic development team to kind of even not shift their focus, but frankly, add this more to their focus. Because it's quite honestly, they do an exceptional job, but it really is up to the council to make the determination if we want to ask them to do more. So I wanted to, you know, with that little bit of introduction, turn it over to Donna to see if there's other things that she would like to add, you know, obviously to the conversation, but just wanted to kind of put this out there to the council for their kind of, for your opinion and your input and your feedback. So with that, I will, I'll just kick it over to Donna.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council members. Mayor, you hit it spot on as we met. You know, our team is so focused on our day-to-day business attraction, retention, and expansion that there's other avenues that we could be observing and looking at as we move forward. I need to keep in mind, you know, we do great when the economy is going great. We've got 24 million square feet of office in our downtown. A million under construction since 2012. Some of you have been on the, the council since, but we've got 40,000 jobs, 45,000 jobs that we've added. So it's a lot of work. It was good in the good times, but you know, now in the turning times, it's how do you reimagine things after COVID? You know, we have a lot of vacancies. In the past, our commercial vacancies was three to 5%. Now it's at 11 and a half compared to a region at 13% vacancy. So we still have to keep our eye on business attraction. We don't want vacancies to get over this 11 and a half mark, but rather come up with strategies to keep business attraction going and for that matter, retention and expansion. We are specifically looking at other projects that we've worked on, as the mayor mentioned, the Maker District and Smith Hub. We've got the guidelines going for that. But in addition to those, we've got the County Island. We're working on scenarios and trying to get that further down the road with assemblage of properties. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes things we do, and especially with our RFPs that are out. And today, for example, the golf course RFP just came in. We're very excited to assist our Parks Department on it. So we have our hands in a lot of things, but we'd like to hear from all of you today, any priorities that as we're going down this path, reimagining economic development, looking to see what the future is while maintaining our position as the best city in the region for economic development and actually throughout the country, but also to come up with more innovative programs using your input as to how to guide us. And because we're looking not only because getting different positions or trying to move forward with programs such as working with federal grants, you know, we're trying to get a focus, a mother, a much deeper focus, as the mayor stated, with his bullet points, as you see on the screen.
Thank you, Donna. Really appreciate it. And yeah, and so, you know, council, I would, you know, kind of open it up to you right now to see if, if this sounds like a direction that you would like to go in. And once again, you know, as we said, I mean, Donna's, Donna's team does such an exceptional job, but I think it's, it's more about, you know, whether or not the council would like to further expand that focus to some different things. And I also wanted to say very quickly too, I just wanted to thank the council. You know, I had a lot of conversations with Vice Mayor Keating before I, you know, rejoined the council in my new role and all the work that he did with the Tempe Maker District on Broadway and obviously the work that the council did to designate the Smith Industrial Hub. I think those were I think those were very, very, you know, very visionary ideas that really hold a lot of promise for the future of those areas within our city, so I wanted to give obvious kudos and props to, to all of the, all the members of the previous council and Vice Mayor Keating for the work that was done in those efforts. With that said, I'm gonna go ahead and turn to the firsthand IC, which is Vice Mayor Keating.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and, you know, thank you Donna for all the great work that you've done thus far, and I'm certainly, you know, very pleased to support expanding your efforts in economic development in the city, particularly in the Maker District. You know, as, you know, you worked very hard on with me, and as it comes, Member Navarro, to make that happen, it's something I'm incredibly proud of, and I actually do, I meant to give you a call, because I do have someone that's looking at that for another affordable housing or workforce housing development, so we will talk about that a little more offline, but you know, certainly anything we can do to economic development in the city, particularly in the areas that we've designated, you know, like, like the Smith Industrial Hub and the Maker District, I'm all for, so please, you know, go forth and, and be merry, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. Next up, let me go to Councilmember Adams.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, I want to say that Donna is a superstar. She makes things happen, and I'm just, we're, the city of Tempe is so lucky to have her on staff, and everything that she's been doing, and in my opinion, with not enough staff, has, has been amazing, and I really think that with more staff and, and being able to reach out to more people, having more, oh, I don't know, but just being able to expand her roles based on more staff, it's, it's just really exciting. I like the way that, that the development is going. I like the focus on it, I like it how we're really, you know, touching base with our neighbor neighborhoods, to make sure they're, they're comfortable with our growth, and I'm just super excited about how this city is gonna evolve. I also know that Rosa and Chauji has, our deputy city manager, has worked closely with Donna, and I think that they make a really good team, and so I'd like to just encourage Rosa and Donna to continue to work well with other, with one another, not that they don't, they work great together, but I just would like to see them work on more projects, and, and also the County Island. I know that we're working at, looking at affordable housing now at the County Island, which I'm really super excited about, and Donna's doing a lot to help us with that, so I just want to say a shout out on helping with that. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, thank you Donna for all you do for our city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Next up, let me go to Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I don't disagree at all with what Councilmember Adam said and Vice Mayor said too, I think Donna and you guys have been doing a really remarkable job with your small team. You guys are continually being, I think, you know, innovative and supportive, and and really bringing in some pretty phenomenal new businesses, and I mean, you just barely touched the iceberg with this slide, the one before that, and you've been doing some really, really remarkable things. So I just want to say thank you to that, and don't sell yourself short either, I think, you know, people kind of forget your involvement with economic development in regards to when COVID happened, and really trying to figure out what was best for our current businesses, and how we can support them, and how we can help them, and and you guys really, you know, came right around, were super flexible and focused on, I think, what the need was at that time, and you did a really great job, and we're super instrumental of ensuring that we came up with a, a good game plan to be able to make sure that we got the right resources and services to the businesses that were here, and that needed the help, so I wanted to say thank you for that, and, and that really meant a lot, I think, to so many people, so and your guys' involvement and just being there and being consistent has been really true since day one. So, you know, my thought, Mayor, is I, I love what you're thinking, and in regards to within the boundaries of Tempe, I, I do feel like there's some things that are gonna be consistent, and, and I think the Vice Mayor mentioned the Makers District, we've put a lot of time and energy into the Makers District, I would love to see us to continue to be proactive in that area. The Smith Hub, to me, is another thing that I think that we really need to try to get some wheels behind, and I think once that starts moving, and if you, if people haven't driven through there, you kind of really need to, because there's a lot of old, but there is some new, and there's some really exciting businesses in there that I didn't even really know until we started having that conversation. So I think a prime focus on those two innovation hubs would be great, because I just feel like we've put a lot of energy and effort and resources into that, and same with the Town Lake, I mean, the vision of our former council members to to be able to put that lake into place, that was prime for development, that's exactly what we need to be doing, so I think those two things are really great. But Mayor, you said something to me that really stuck true, is, you know, let's not just forget about like what's inside of our neighborhoods, and what's on this, what's on some of our major corners, all the vacancies, some of those empty big buildings in these old strip malls, I, I would love to see us take a proactive approach to really try to figure out what that looks like, and how we can bring life back to some of those corners, and I, I think our, our residents would really appreciate that, I think that's to me, part of being a neighborhood hub is to really have some key different elements, and those corners are, are one of the things, I mean, I live not too far from Broadway and McClintock, and you know, that, that Smart and Final has been empty for I don't even know how long now, a couple of years, and you know, that's kind of disappointing, so it's, it would be one of those things, I think, many of the neighborhoods would really strive for us to kind of just look a little bit more internally, I mean, to see what we can do to not only fill some of the empty buildings, but also look at those vacant lots. I think the mayor's right in regards to seeing what's out there, we, we don't own a lot of land, so if we have an opportunity to purchase or partner with somebody to create something unique that would help fill a gap, I 100% support that. I, I feel like we are in such a great position as a city, and that doesn't happen by chance, it happens to people like you Donna and your team, community development and their team, and really, everybody together, and the quality of life, the great place, the great atmosphere that we create for businesses, for employees, for students, I mean, it all works together, and, and to me, that's one of the things I want to bring up, and I don't want to be a Debbie Downer, right? I, I, I think we are really phenomenal when it comes to economic development, but at the same time, I have to say, you know, kind of be careful what you wish for. Because as we grow, and as we bring more people, and as we bring more traffic, as much as we try to encourage people to use multimodal transportation, I mean, there's always going to be traffic. Are we doing our due diligence to ensure that we are not spreading ourselves too thin? And when I say thin, I'm not just saying in your department, Donna, I'm talking about human services, community services, community development, are we doing just too much that we really are not being able to provide that quality of life that I think that we all strive for, for our residents, first and foremost, and then the people that have the ability to enjoy our city, so I know that you can work really well with all the other departments, but you know, I would love to just kind of look at, you know, some of those unintended consequences, unfortunately, that happen when it comes with growth. And, you know, what impact are we putting on trying to just provide, maybe let's say, youth sports, or adult sports, or different types of services for those individuals that may need counseling services, whatever it may be? You know, how are we seeing that this, these development types are impacting the services that we really pride ourselves on? Because as your department grows, so does all the other departments, because I think we have to follow suit, and really provide, you know, exactly what we're trying to as a city, so to me, that's would be one of my, my concerns, and I would love it if there's a way that we could maybe, you know, come up with some type of a system that really looks at how we're taxing all the other departments with our growth that we are pushing for. You know, 45,000 jobs, that, like I said, that doesn't happen by chance, it happens by people that really want this to happen and want to be here, so I feel like we are a coveted place to be. Not only are we on Jeopardy, but come on, I, I mean, look at the names and, and the different businesses, Donna, that you guys have touched and, and want to be a part of Tempe, and we're so thankful for that. But you know, with growth, there is growing pains, and we just, I just want to make sure that we aren't stretching ourselves too thin, too quickly, too fast, or just within a really good pace that it's manageable at the same time, so you know, for what it's worth, I, I definitely support you being flexible, kind of looking, you know, internally and seeing, you know, where we do, where we're falling short, if we are in certain areas, and I mentioned a few that I would love to see be elevated, and how that works into your game plan, you know, I, I trust your abilities and your professionalism, that you'll, you'll be able to do what's right for this community and move forward, so again, thank you to you and your team for what you do, and, and just reminding us, I think, you know, how important development is and growth is, and, you know, I'm grateful for it, so thank you.
Thank you, it's, it's not only a network of things, it's a system of things, you're spot on, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. It, it doesn't end in us, with us, and it doesn't begin with us, it's a collaborative effort, and I know our team, my team, I, I give special kudos to Joe Bushbucker and to Maria Lochner, because without them engaging with the city employees outside of our division, I don't know how any of this could have gotten done, so you're spot on. And we hope to continue and grow those relationships, so we could come back as a united force to really impress upon you. We're hearing you, we move forward, and we try to implement plans that you set in place. Especially with Maker District and Smith Hub.
Right on, thanks Donna.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage, next up, Councilmember Garland.
Hi, thank you so much, thank you Donna, for you and your team, and I just have to say that you had me at proactive, that's all you needed to put on there. So thank you so much for, for the slide and, and the list on there, and the only thing I would say is, I, I don't know if this is the appropriate list, but I would like to see something north of Red Mountain Freeway on Scottsdale Road. Some of those areas right there, I think we really need to address, we have a lot of neighborhood comments and questions and, and thoughts on that that we get throughout the year, and I just think that that's an area that it's, for some reason, we just seem to, I don't know if it's forgetting about it, or something, and I don't want to do that, I want to recognize the importance of that part of our city also. So I don't know if this is the list for it, but if it is, then I would love to see that on there, and, and you know, I, I agree with my other council colleagues, I think you guys have done a great job, and it's so much fun to work with you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland, you know, Donna and I have talked about that area as well, and I know she's also got some big plans for that kind of, you know, rural Scottsdale Road portion as well, because I agree with you, that we don't ever want to forget about those parts of the city that are, you know, for, sometimes the parts that are really far north, or the parts that are really far west, or very far east. A lot of times, we have heard that coming back from residents sometimes saying, hey, we don't always feel like we're connected to all the prosperity that's going on in the city of Tempe, so I think it's very important, and I appreciate you highlighting that part of town to make sure that they know that they're in all of the conversations we're having, that they are also very much a part of what we're trying to accomplish as a city, so thank you for bringing that up. Let me go next to Councilmember QB.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and kudos to you Donna, on your vision for the city, and I obviously really appreciate the proactivity here. You know, again, I don't want to be a Debbie Downer, but when you do look at the Broadway Maker District and the Smith Industrial Hub, I think we've heard a lot of, you know, critique from, from very engaged residents, I mean, probably most residents don't necessarily know much what's happening, but we've kind of not really, we've had some conflicts, shall we say, about the vision of the, the hubs, and what actually is getting built there, and we haven't had a lot of properties built, but they really haven't come close to being, say, affordable housing, or even true workforce housing. Really just low-end market rate in some instances, and so if we're talking about investment in, in, in a vision for social enterprise areas, and trying to be a social innovation sector, like I'm all in, I really think that we have some unique, we have a unique system, ecosystem in, in Tempe, an innovation ecosystem, and we have Arizona State University, the most innovative university in the country, how many times running? We have a lot of impact investors that seem to be interested in Tempe, and we have, we have the idea campus, we have science and tech corporations, and we have emerging social enterprises, so I would like to see us take a turn to think about social enterprise zones, not necessarily meaning it in the IRS definition, but looking at opportunities to really invest in social enterprise businesses, and I think that's ultimately gonna be more, more, it will spark more the local economy, which is what we need to see sparked, you know, working with local first in our chamber, we can really begin to develop more of a, a social, social enterprise sector in different parts of our city. And, you know, that means supporting B corporations and social enterprise, and there's been an idea that a number of researchers at ACU put forward for a food, food forest, that would be a place to both grow food and teach people about food, and teach people about cooking, and also be a communal and a fun place to be, so I think it's really important that we, we look to that, and that we engage our, our colleagues and our our partners at the university and in nonprofits, and in other social enterprise and B corporations in the valley, to see what can we do, like, like that's cast a broad net and bring those, those actors in, because there's a lot of ideas out there, cooking, and they're looking for places to cook, cook and bake those ideas, and sometimes they go to Phoenix, when I wish they would think about Tempe. And so, you know, I say this in the, in the, with heartfelt, heartfelt intention that, you know, we're here with a retreat, so you know, I could wax on and say how wonderful all the work that we all do is, and we, we do amazing work, but we're here to envision a city that that can really make its mark, and we're making our mark as, with, you know, Rosa leading the way and all the, the big data opportunities to really use big data to inform our city policy, and you think about the wastewater analysis, there's so much innovation. So I think we, we need to really have that be at our core, and ensure that the hubs that we create really do follow through, and and the reality meets the, the vision that's been expressed there, so, just to wrap up, I really think we have an opportunity for social innovation and ways to really engage our community, so our members of our community who feel, you know, distrustful of development process heretofore, might feel like the development process is actually working toward creating social justice and equity, thank you.
I absolutely agree, and you did bring up a good point, because our team is working with Rosa's team on this issue, and trying to work with their consultants, Rosa was good enough to bring us in early on, we've been looking at opportunities not only with that group and her consultants, but as my, a member of GPEC, a directors meeting, and brought it up regionally, how can we work together too, so it is on our radar, and absolutely spot on, it should be part of our dialogue as we navigate through everything that we do. We look at it in a different lens right now, we're trying for, both from the financial aspect of it, and even, you know, with federal funds and micro lending, etc., so we're micro manufacturing for lower-income areas, so we're, we've got our pulse on it, it's a time element to get things passed, but with Rosa's help on this, she's guided us all along the way, so that is definitely a chapter in what we do.
Thank you so much, and I know we have a general plan update that, that's coming up, and I hope that might be an opportunity to create more sustainable development, and look at rezoning to include more sustainable rezoning, and I know there's also an opportunity for you to work with community development on that update, so that our goals are aligned across the organization.
Oh, definitely, because we have a section in there, so that's an excellent point.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. Just one other quick thing, I guess, on my end too, and I know we've talked about this a little bit, I, I know Councilmember Arredondo Savage and I have had a couple of offline discussions about this as well, that one of the biggest things is that, you know, in a city that's 40 square miles, the reality is, you know, we have to be so intentional about our decision-making, I think that also gets to what Councilmember QB was just talking about as well. And my, you know, my perspective is, you know, when I think about, you know, Hometown For All, one of the reasons why that program was started was because, you know, we kind of realized that part of what was happening, as much as we're happy to have the investment from folks who want to build market rate and even luxury housing in our community, I mean, we're looking for a diversity of housing options, but one of the challenges is, given what the market looks like right now, sometimes when a lot of these properties go up for sale on Apache Boulevard, or on Broadway Road, or in other parts of our community, they kind of immediately get snatched up by investors who pay a very high cost for the land, and the next thing, you know, that we get is either, you know, it's just another sort of large-scale apartment complex, and while, you know, and while, you know, we're, once again, we're happy for any investment that we get in our city, and people who clearly want to be here, Fortune 500 companies and big-time builders, at the same time, I think one of the things that the council has talked about, and our community's probably talked about even louder, is just trying to make sure that we maintain the appropriate diversity of housing and the right mix. And so I know the Hometown For All initiative was ratified by this council for the purpose of making sure that if we controlled more of our own land, then we could control more of our own destiny moving forward, and we wouldn't just be at the whims of the private market. And so I think about that, even in terms of whether it's opportunities on that third bullet for Hometown For All acquisitions, we talked about the Makers District and the Smith Hub, but just, you know, obviously making sure as well that, as Councilmember Arredondo Savage talked about, that the businesses and the things that we're seeking here are also sort of compatible with what our residents want, which is part of this sort of neighborhood focus in the subheading that Donna put here, but also making sure that but also making sure that it really, the uses are compatible with what we are trying to do, even when it comes to, you know, traffic or, you know, because we want to make sure that we're creating a community that that's sustainable in every single way and that what we're doing isn't causing us to, you know, it's a great business or a great apartment complex, but now people can't get through the streets and it's taking forever to get from one part of the city to the next. And these are, you know, Donna, once again, things that we all know that you and your team consider whenever you're talking to any company and trying to get a corporate locate here. And we know you just, you do an exceptional job. But I think, you know, the reason for this conversation, why I know you and I talked about this and why the council's talking about this right now is just to, you know, tell you and your team to continue, you know, keeping up the great work that you always do and all the great things that you've done on behalf of the city, but also just sort of to, you know, further expand some of your focus and talk about some other things that we can probably do with even more of a neighborhood focus and probably a housing focus, while all while making sure that they are, you know, fully compatible use as with what our residents would like to see in their respective neighborhoods moving forward. So, you know, we know you're doing incredible work and we just appreciate you bringing this presentation to us, because I think it really, as as Councilmember Garland said, you had me at proactive. And so the fact that you put this out here and proposes, I think it's, I think it's exceptional. And I quite honestly can't wait to see what's going to come from this. I see Councilmember Navarro's hand, too.
Mayor?
Yes.
Jerry? Yeah, one thing, just to bring up, and Donna, obviously, thank you for everything you do. Yeah, I'm always a big supporter of Donna, big fan, big fan. Anyways, do we, are we going to have a retreat with the zoning or our planning zoning or, or I mean, what's it now, right now? You know what I mean? But are we going to do our retreat with our, with those, with our commissioners on that planning and zoning and getting our vision, basically what we're talking about today? That's kind of like a continual yearly thing, it seems like we need to do.
Right, yeah, I'll follow up with Shelley Siler on that for the Design Review Commission. I think that is necessary and it helps both our departments. You're absolutely right to come up with the strategies, if you will, and how to connect with everything that's already been said. So Councilman Navarro, yes, that will continue to happen.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Any other council members, any comments or questions for Donna? Great. Donna, anything else you'd like to add?
Only that, you know, we have experienced with COVID and I'm sure we're all tired of hearing about it, because we certainly are and hearing from our businesses. But then there's also opportunities that come with this. And our staff has really pulled together and worked with businesses. And just, for example, our idea campus, we can't forget about that, meeting with them and trying to regenerate the focus of it from our outreach. It has been a struggle, but it is picking up slightly, but there will be more efforts with that. There are, there's a few, I have to watch what I say and what I don't say. We all know those NDAs. We're very excited that things are taking a slight turn. Tempe has slowed down a little bit, but we haven't come to a halt. But we look forward to the future here in the near future, by the end of the year, to start bringing some more of what you've been mentioning here today, some projects that may be baked enough to bring forward for the community to see what's happening. So thank you very much for this opportunity, Mayor. I really appreciate it.
Absolutely, Donna. Thank you so much, Donna, for all the work that you do and your team does. And just keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Moving on here, we're going to go to item number three, which is a presentation on homeless services. It's a homeless solutions update. I'm going to actually bring our Human Services Director up, Naomi Farrell. But I also wanted to very quickly, before we even get started, thank councilmembers Joel Navarro and Councilmember Dorian Garland for the work that they've done. I know they've been working with Naomi on this presentation and we're excited to bring some things back to the council for a full discussion. So I just wanted to thank them very publicly. And with that, I will turn it over to Naomi.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Presenting to me, with me today, I have Deputy Human Services Directors Paul Bentley and Levon Lamy. We'll provide an overview of the interdepartmental work to address homelessness in the community and an improved sense of safety in the parks and some progress updates.
Naomi, Naomi, a quick thing before you keep, you're sounding a little bit far away from the microphones. Is there a way to make it a little louder?
I will move closer. Can you hear me?
Little, little better, yep.
Okay. So prior to the fiscal year 2122 budget process, council requested an interdepartmental approach emphasizing human services solutions to address the increasing concerns associated with homelessness. Mayor and Council placed emphasis on the safety for all community members while ensuring we are not criminalizing homelessness. Staff from Human Services, Community Services, Tempe PD, and Communications and Media Relations jointly developed a plan. This plan was presented in combination with strategies for expanding homeless shelters during the February 18th, '21 work-study session. Based on the feedback received during that meeting, the plan was scaled down to produce an interdepartmental operating supplemental budget request. That revised plan was partially funded for the 2122 fiscal year based on funding available due to the economic climate. The city remains committed to creating quality recreational experiences for Tempe residents, ending homelessness and supporting mental health and well-being. The three following council priorities are directly accelerated by this collaborative interdepartmental plan. 1.23, Safety in Parks. 3.28, Achieve an End to Homelessness Defined as Rare, Brief, and One Time as Measured by Tempe's Annual Count. And 3.37, Mental Health and Wellbeing. It's worth noting for priority 3.28, staff have worked with MAG to develop a Tempe-specific component of the Homeless Management Information System. This enhancement under tracks Tempe's diversion and prevention efforts related to homelessness. Additionally, Community Services and Human Services have covered a, convened a group of staff and community partners to adopt and implement a social determinants of health framework. This will help refine and inform 3.37 priorities for mental health and well-being. These priorities help guide the development of the interdepartmental work groups plan. The plan uses a layered approach, including the six strategies, which had, you know, have been, greater detail on these strategies have been provided to council in prior presentations. So I'm just going to briefly go over the six strategies. So one, it's increased dedicated homeless outreach in city parks. Two, Ensure Care7 provides 24/7 mental health and substance use response and support. Three, Enhance park and desert preserve maintenance and cleanup efforts. Four is communicate results and provide opportunities for neighborhood engagement. Five, Refine park security through unarmed G Forest deployment. And six, Provide necessary shelter options for individuals and families experiencing homelessness. We're now going to share some accomplishments since the beginning of the 2122 fiscal year. So I'll turn it over to Collette.
So working from left to right on this chart, we see that Hope is continuing to directly serve and house individuals experiencing homelessness. Since the beginning of the fiscal year, July and August, Hope Outreach efforts made over 1,034 contacts, offering resources, services, and a path to housing. And in past conversations, we have discussed that it takes multiple contacts at times to help individuals gain comfort and trust with our staff in order to work towards housing. So those contacts, those 1,034 contacts do include duplicate counts of individuals. Last fiscal year, Hope made over 6,000 contacts and served over 128 individuals in the city's non-congregate temporary transitional housing program for the motel. Of those served, over 86% or 87 households have achieved a positive housing outcome. Since July of 2021, Hope completed 33 new shelter intakes with 17 individuals, again, over the last two months. Citywide, our outreach efforts continue to show success by housing approximately 394 individuals last fiscal year. This is an 8% increase from a prior fiscal year and a 65% increase since fiscal year 2018. The mayor and council support staff has finalized an agreement with Arizona State University to fund two additional outreach positions. That recruitment is currently in place. Staff has been successful in its hiring process by finally finalizing four job offers to date to fill the six available homeless outreach positions. Moving to Care7. Since July 1st, Care7's general line has received over 131 calls related to homelessness, mental illness, or substance use. Further, Care7's crisis response team has dispatched through over 100 calls related to the same needs. With the fiscal year 22 supplemental funds received, Human Services is implementing a Care7 mental health response team known as MyHeart. The operational plan has been finalized and recruitment for associate staff will begin in the near future. Human Services, the Tempe Police Department, the Tempe Fire Medical Rescue are coordinating efforts to align MyHeart within 911 and non-emergency dispatching protocols. Those meetings are active today. Parks Maintenance. Increasing overall visibility in desert parks and preserves provides for a safer environment. Last fiscal year, over 53 tons of debris was removed. Over 3.5 tons have been removed since the beginning of the fiscal year. With this year's approved funding, Parks Maintenance will continue addressing encampments and vegetation. Encampment cleanups are supported with both the police department's parks officers and Hope Outreach staff to provide a compassionate enforcement approach and understanding the necessary need to be able to properly address property. Parks is working with procurement to release a request for quotes to manage the storage of personal property associated with these cleanups. This is following a request for, our request for information that was done prior this year. The remaining component of the Parks Maintenance strategy is the hiring of a desert park supervisor and the creation of a volunteer program, all items within the plan that was presented this spring. Communications and Media Relations. We want our community members to know about the city's efforts, where to find more information, how to voice your thoughts, sign up for the volunteer program, and explore other ways to engage. An example of communication plan includes similar notifications and engagements around our summer heat relief, rental and utility assistance, and Jenny's trailer debut, which occurred this week. Overall, communication engagement includes working closely with Neighborhood Services to reach target audiences and explore follow-up engagement with the community. Moving to Police and G4S. The Police and G4S strategy is intended to continue to collaborate work between Tempe Police Parks Officers, Hope, and add an additional layer of unarmed park security. Hope and the officers within Tempe Police Parks Officer Program have worked together in partnership for over three years. Activities include the annual point-in-time call, fulfilling the city's encampment response and responding to challenging needs in which neither workgroup would be effective on its own. In brief, through this partnership, we have been able to assist individuals with services, resources, and housing options while promoting the health and safety for all. G4S Park Security was funded as a one-time supplemental for fiscal year 22. With this year's funding allocation, Park Security includes six security officers and two supervisors available in parks. Seven days per week, 22 hours per day, from 6:00 AM to 4:00 noon. Tempe Police Department directs the G4S Park Security deployment in the city. The deployment schedule is flexible to respond to resident concerns and parks with highest need. Temporary transitional housing.
Moving into the temporary transitional housing and, you know, shelter options for this. You know, as we continue to try to address these challenges to enhance and ensure that we have all of the temporary, the shelter, temporary transitional housing and affordable housing to provide that suite of services. One of the items for this year that came through the funding was the $450,000 that went through a Tempe Community Council Agency Review, RFP, process. That process awarded $281,980 to Tempe Community Action Agency to expand their iHealth program by 30 beds. Additionally, $168,020 was awarded to a new lease East Valley Mint Center in funding a 32-bed expansion. As part of that, and in moving towards the temporary transitional and affordable housing options, we are finalizing the acquisition of a 40-unit property that will be utilized for temporary transitional housing to start with, with a mid- and long-term goal of having that redeveloped into higher-density multifamily affordable housing project. We continue to work, look at existing properties and other properties that may be becoming available in order to do future redevelopment to increase the affordable workforce and transitional housing needs. As additionally, as we are doing, working towards that, we do work to develop five-year operating forecasts for each of the individual facilities and properties to ensure that they are financially viable moving forward. In addition to this, we have been working, doing regional work with the Maricopa County Association of Governments, or MAG, towards regional solutions to homelessness, shelter, housing, you know, kind of e-all of the above, as we worked through that. And in order to continue assisting as part of the American Rescue Plan Act, the Tempe Housing Authority was awarded emergency housing vouchers that are specifically targeted and preference for individuals and families experiencing or at risk of homelessness. These vouchers do accept direct referrals from the Hope and Care7 team, and teams, plural, and working with the coordinated entry countywide.
So a clear example of this comprehensive system of support is Sixth Street Park. Each of these six strategies was enacted to meet the needs of our community. Hope provided specific access to services, resources, and shelter options. Care7 was making connections to mental health and substance use services. Police and G4S is providing clarity on expected behaviors in the park and city property. Parks Maintenance was addressing the grounds. Communications and Media Relations was ensuring the city's message was presented clearly and the availability of emergency shelter options for those choosing to engage in services towards housing was a key component. Each of these strategies worked together to appropriately respond to the needs of the community. This is a closer look at Hope's operations since July 1st. One of our historical challenges was an inability to provide consistent response and support throughout the city's boundaries. This year's recurring funding made inroads to addressing this challenge. Specifically, these resources have supported the creation of one additional outreach team and allowed for the deployment and development of a geographic-based deployment model. This model is shown on this slide. The deployment model includes three geographic zones across the city and two specific assignments. This approach evenly distributes resources among high-demand areas and supports more frequent proactive engagements. This includes expanding coverage from Monday through Friday presently to seven days per week. The zones are ASU, West Zone, East Zone, with a boundary being rural road. In addition, one team is assigned specifically to the city's emergency shelter program for the motel and one outreach specialist assigned to Parks, Hope Outreach Initiatives. This same outreach specialist is intended to utilize the new Jenny's trailer, our mobile cooling and resource center, as part of their work. These zones will promote a consistent outreach presence uniformly throughout the city. In summary, with the current resources, Hope can support these three zones. Additional resources will allow Hope to create a fourth zone with a dedicated team. This fourth zone will include the area of the city north of Tempe Town Lake and the river bottom. This growth is projected in the five-year operational forecast covered on the next slide.
This five-year forecast displays the interdepartmental work groups timeline to continue to work implementing the plan presented during the February 18th work-study session. The table shows what you could expect to see in the future year's budget cycles. I'm just going to briefly go over what you could expect to see in the upcoming FY '23 cycle. Intent is to add two outreach FTEs to support the new zone that will be north of Tempe Town Lake and the river bottom. Add one FTE and .5 admin to increase the MyHeart coverage and support for Care7. Sustain park's vegetation maintenance efforts through reoccurring funding. Convert the current PIO wage position to an FTE and add recurring operating budget. Finally, we'll address the security needs through recurring, reoccurring, recurring funding for G4S. We're now more than happy to answer any questions you may have related to this work group's overall related to this work group's overall timeline or any of the topics discussed in this presentation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Naomi. I'm going to go ahead and turn to Councilmember Garland.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor. Naomi and Paul, and just give kudos to you and to your team. And thank you so much for what you are doing for our community. I know my council colleagues and their heart for the unsheltered and vulnerable in our city, and I know that our city staff cares deeply about this issue. But I also know that I cannot be the only one thinking that we can do, we can, and we must do more. All of us get emails and calls about unsheltered either from our residents or our businesses. And I think we need to come up with a plan and adequate staffing that proactively addresses these issues without resident businesses or us councilmembers having to call them in. You know, if we are waiting for calls to come in to us, we are already behind. I think it's important that our approach shifts from a reactive process to a more proactive one, as you heard earlier, I like that word. We spent a lot of time discussing and addressing issues that have occurred. I want us to get into a position where we can recognize where we can anticipate and react to what comes next. And I think we need to recognize and adjust where the puck is going and not where it has been. Homelessness is a complex social issue, and any complex problem requires an equally complex and intricate solution. And I would like to ask my council colleagues for consensus to have Naomi and her team come back to us with a staffing structure, including possible additional resources, and a different approach that they believe will move the needle on this issue. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. I just want to say I second everything you just said. I think that, you know, our Human Services team, Naomi, Paul, Levon, they do an exceptional job. But I think, you know, there's, one of the things we need to continue to do is try to find ways to, you know, help them even more when it comes to providing even more staffing. So we can really, as you talked about, shift from a more kind of reactive approach to a proactive one. And once again, that's no fault at all on our Human Services team. The reality is if we want them to do more proactive work in terms of having, you know, more folks from HOPE or from CARE7 or folks out there kind of, you know, working to address these challenges that we have and working with our unsheltered population, we're going to have to talk about a staffing plan that allows for that to take place. Because as we talked about, you know, we can, you know, many times, you know, tell residents that, hey, you know, you know, call into, you know, call into Human Services or call, you know, call us whatever when something goes on. But we all know that by the time the resident or the business has actually picked up the phone and called a council member or called the city, that person's already frustrated. And so, you know, I agree that it can't be a situation where we continue to, you know, react to what people call in to us. It's a situation where we need to have a staffing model in place and a sort of strategic plan that allows for us, as Councilmember Garland so eloquently stated, to really move the needle on this and make sure that we are, you know, kind of addressing this in a much more proactive way. And I know that we have the right people on our Human Services team to actually get that done. I mean, I've got so much confidence in their ability to do this. I think it's just a matter of them coming back with a really big innovative plan and for the council to stand behind them and frankly, support the resources that they need to get this done. Because I think it's a critical issue, and I think it's incumbent upon us that we actually, that we take this step forward today. So I just wanted to thank Councilmember Garland for her work and frankly, for really, some really heartfelt words. So thank you, Councilmember. I'm going to next look to Councilmember Adams, and then I will go to Vice Mayor Keating.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I mean, our, our Human Services, they're doing a great job. I don't believe we can staff our way out of this situation, though. I have a little bit different perspective. I guess for all my years of being a social worker, I think that we need to partner more effectively with TCAA. And they have a lot of resources available. And I think that if we form a more closely working relationship, a closer working relationship with them, that we can really make a difference. And the Ares Foundation and those kinds of groups, there's lots of nonprofits out there. And I think that if we can really somehow bring it kind of to get them more together and us work together, that we can, we can really make a difference. And, and I completely agree with being proactive. I mean, that's how we avoid a lot of situations going south and, you know, keep people in their apartments as opposed to evicting them and having them be on the streets. And then it just becomes a snowball. So I really do believe that, you know, I'm completely supportive of Human Services, but I don't think we can staff our way out of it with just the city. I think if we really work with our partners, we can have a, and streamline our operations with our partners, that it will make a huge difference. So that is my perspective, and I appreciate the floor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Adams. One quick remark, and then I want to go to Vice Mayor Keating next. You know, I definitely want to acknowledge what Councilmember Adams said. I do think that our nonprofit partners, you know, TCAA, Tempe Community Action Agency, the Ares Foundation, a lot of other organizations we work with do play a pivotal role in helping us to, really to address this. And I think they, they also do an exceptional job. And I know very recently, the council has allocated even more money to, you know, organizations like Tempe Community Action Agency for the purpose of further expanding their shelter options through I-Help and other things that they're currently doing. But I think that, you know, I think I would sort of suggest sort of a hybrid. I think they do play a pivotal role, and we need to continue to work with them. But I think for the kind of work we're doing right now, when it comes to that kind of on-the-streets outreach and the multiple touches, I think that Paul Bentley talked about, I do think that's an area where it's appropriate for us to frankly, staff up more because I think we specialize in that kind of work. But a lot of our other partners, I agree with Councilmember Adams, you know, Ares Foundation, TCAA, they also have a, have a huge role that they can help us play in this. And they're already really actively engaged on the ground doing that work. So I think it's somewhat of a combination of all those things from my perspective. But I appreciate greatly Councilmember Adams bringing up our partners and making sure that we acknowledge them. Let me go to Vice Mayor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Naomi, for this presentation. Generally in support of everything you've laid out here. I do have one concern, though, you know, in December of 2020. Yeah, what year are we in, 2020? With this pandemic, it's hard to tell. December of 2020, I submitted a supplemental for, you know, a coordinator for Tempe Works. And I don't see that included at all. It was funded. So could you speak to that a little bit? It's been nearly two years since we had a very contentious meeting over Tempe Works. I'm sure you remember. And obviously, I'm still very concerned that the program's not really moving along like it should be. So could you speak to that? Where we are, where are we in that process? Where are we with Tempe Works?
Sure. Process with the coordinator for Tempe Works, they're going to be coming on board September 27th, recently hired. Really, I think we've found somebody that's going to be perfect for that position to help move that program along. So we are definitely, we still have that in the toolbox as far as a very important piece in this work that we're doing because we know workforce, we've had some successes there. Those that are ready to get into the, back to work, that's going to stabilize them, permanently stabilize them, and probably get them housed. So it's definitely an important piece of it. And again, Councilmember Keating, that new employee will start on the 27th.
27th. Why? I'd be very interested in meeting this person, just to kind of chat with them. And, you know, I'm very interested, obviously, in seeing this, this program succeed. Not to micromanage, but I just want to know, you know, who's managing? What was my, my first initiative and one of, I believe, one of the most important initiatives in the city as far as getting people, you know, a path to self-sufficiency. So thank you very much.
Right. Definitely will create that meeting with you.
Excellent. Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. Let me next go to Councilmember Navarro.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, big, I tell you what, big kudos to Naomi and Paul and staff. And I'll tell you what, this is an undertaking, obviously, for them, for us, for the community. Both me and Doreen were just, you know, pleased with the presentation they gave us and the plans that they're putting forth for us and our community and council. It's tremendous, it really is. And it, it's one of those things, and I think it's been said that this does have to go strategically. Public safety has a big tie to this. The opportunities that we're already exploring with what PD is doing with their new programs, working with ASU, wastewater programs, all these little ancillary things that we are doing as a community is huge, which is a big coordination effort between those and the, and our community services and trying to get people off the street, try to get people homes. And just actually come to a point where, you know, we need to make sure that we're, you know, also enforcing, you know, and then that's another piece of this, this whole pie, too. You know, we can give all the services, but at the end of the day, we also have to start creating policies that have, you know, some sort of teeth that helps our residents, you know, actually feel safe within their community, actually, you know, know that the city is taking care of them. So with all that said, you know, like CARE7, because I reflect to them, you know, often, just because I'm familiar with that program and with the City of Phoenix CR teams, they are such a value because of, you know, what their specialties can do in a given moment, 24/7, getting people to the right direction. But we do have to start considering buffering or increasing that system. I know it's been stated that we have to start in increasing positions over a course of a five-year period, which I totally appreciate the plan, giving those projections because that's exactly what we need in coordination with PD and what they're going to need and fire, and they're going to need. These are the core things that for us and our residents that we need to really start paying attention to and making sure that those programs are implemented first before we start implementing some new programs. So I want to keep that in mind, that this is a big deal. It's going to be a bigger deal, but we also need to make sure that we're doing our, our best to not only support, you know, the things that help our police officers and our firefighters out and increasing those other things within community service. But we also need to make sure that on the council side, we need to be crafting, you know, what we expect, our rules and regulations, so to speak, and making sure that our, you know, that everyone within our community is doing the right thing. And, you know, at the end of the day, we just need to make sure that we're enforcing that, too. So I appreciate what you guys are doing, and I really do appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Let me next go to Councilmember Aradondo Savage.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Naomi, to you and your team. I think it's always good to kind of just remind ourselves and self-reflect of, you know, how far we've come and all the amazing things that we've been able to implement and the lives that we've been able to change. And, you know, like I said earlier, that doesn't happen by chance. It happens because we've got really great people doing really amazing work. So just, just hats off to you and your team. And I think we continue to throw things at you and, and just the way that we support and work to try to get people off the street and really get people sheltered is just been an evolution. And I'm just really grateful, and it's, it's been kind of just a little bit of a wild ride. And it's really hard to find out, you know, if we're always doing the right thing and things are always changing. But you guys have really done so much amazing work. And I just want to say thank you to everybody, I think, in the city of Tempe, from all the different departments that continue to address our homeless population, our unsheltered individuals that live here and are looking for shelter. So just thank you for that, first and foremost. And thank you to Joel and Doreen for the work that you guys are doing within your committee to make sure that we are staying on track and we're paying attention and we're looking long-term, which I like. So I'm a planner, everybody knows that. I love process, and I can't really help it. So to me, this is right up my alley, and I certainly do appreciate that and have, have really supported the steps that we've taken to this point. And, and moving forward and looking at this, it does kind of, you know, make me, just gives me a little cause for pause, just a little bit. I think what Councilmember Navarro mentioned about enforcement is something that we really have to talk about. Because when we hear from our residents, it's usually because they're really upset, you know, that whether it's panhandling or people sleeping at their businesses or in the back of their businesses, it's usually those individuals that are there that are, just aren't being respectful to the property. And, and to me, that's just not acceptable. If, if people are not doing the right thing, I really, it shouldn't matter what your status is. We want people to always play by the same rules. So I think if anything comes back, if it does come back, which I support something coming back, that it has to have an element of enforcement of what that looks like. You know, our people, the people that live here in this community that do have shelters, that live in the neighborhood, live in an apartment complex, I mean, they have rights, too. And, and I think one of the things of having this really outstanding quality of life is being, feeling safe in your neighborhood. And if they're not feeling safe, then that's something that we definitely need to work on. So I 100% support that. And I know Jennifer Adams mentioned something about, you know, we can't really necessarily staff our way out. And that really resonated with me because I feel like, you know, we are taking on a lot of responsibility as a city. And I don't know any other city that has done all the amazing comprehensive work that we have, which is great and then bad all at the same time. Because I would love to see more partnerships with our sister cities, with the nonprofits that we've heard so much about, the different organizations that I think can take some of that weight off of our shoulders. Because I, I think we have to be very careful of the way we spend our resources, which I think that's something that we do really well. So if, if something does come back, or when it does come back, I kind of would like to keep, I'd like to make sure that we're seeing it with our eyes open. And I understand that when we provide a comprehensive plan to attack and address homelessness, which I don't disagree with, that it is expensive. I mean, there's no other way to say that. It does take a lot of time. It takes a lot of people. It takes a lot of money. And I just want to make sure that we are putting that into perspective because we have a lot of different populations here in the city of Tempe. And I want to ensure that we are also being just as respectful and responsible to meeting their needs, too. We've talked about ADA, you know, we've talked about youth and adults and seniors. And I just want to make sure that we're able to put that all into perspective. And, and I want to make sure that we are balancing all of our resource for all of our populations. That's something that's really, really important to me. I certainly do like that proactive approach because I think that we can, you know, do what we believe works, works best and works right and has, has the most success. And I know that it, it doesn't just happen overnight. I mean, this is something that's going to take some time. So at the, at the same time, I just don't want to make, I just want to make sure that the city of Tempe is, is not taking on more responsibility than we need to. We can't solve homelessness for the state of Arizona. I mean, we can certainly help our population here in the city, and I am super willing to do that. But at the same time, I realize that when we utilize so many resources, that it does take away from something else. And I just want to make sure that we're going into this with our eyes open, that we are really understanding the impact that it has. And, and also, you know, I realize that we are being super successful, and I certainly do appreciate that. So I'm not trying to downplay any of the work that we've done to date by any means. Also, I'm saying I just want to be able to put this into perspective. And so maybe Ken Jones, that's kind of one thing that maybe you can help me understand is where we are in the budget and the resources that we're allocating to be as successful as we are or to get to this five, this fiscal year '26, '27, and what that looks like and, and how that compares to the entire budget. That would be something that's really important to me. And, you know, with that, again, Naomi, thank you to you and your team and the work that you continue to do. And just to all of our departments, all of our city staff that, you know, really work on this initiative. We have definitely come a very long way, and I'm really proud of the work. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Aradondo Savage. Anyone else? Any comments or questions? Councilmember Cubey?
No, I just want to say that Mayor Woods, when you ran for office, you ran on a number of issues. But you spoke a lot about homelessness in our community and how the same old approaches weren't going to cut it. And it wasn't about how much we spent per capita or what our budget was compared to other cities. It was how effective the programs were, were to be. And so you went to staff, and you said, "Come up with your best ideas." And obviously, you think about money, but don't think about money. Just think, what is, what are the ways that we can approach this and tackle this and get people housed and get people the services they need in an extraordinary time in our city and state and world history, right? So I think that that's what we're seeing with the plans that Naomi and Paul and Levon, all the Human Services team has brought forward. And I just want to commend you, Mr. Mayor, on your vision and, and just approval of what I see before me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cubey. Really appreciate it. Um, anyone else? Any comments or questions? Let me just say this, then. Um, you know, thank you for a really good conversation here. Couple of things, I've just sort of, I made a couple of notes, and I can try to wrap this up. But, you know, what it sounds like is that there's consensus to go forward to bring back kind of a more detailed plan to the council. And I want to kind of go back to something that Councilmember Garland said during her remarks. And it kind of piggybacked on something that Councilmember Cubey said. You know, I, really, it's not, it's, it's not about the money to me necessarily. It's about moving the needle. And I don't, you know, I don't personally, you know, need to get into, you know, you know, what staff members, you know, you might you know, what staff members, you know, you might need to bring on, Naomi, or how many people in, in any given division. But more so just about what you personally think you and Paul and Levon and your team would think would actually move the needle when it comes to, you know, the, the situations we see many times in Tempe. We have a, we have a number of people like every day, you know, sleeping and living in the river bottom. And not only is, you know, is that not an ideal place to be, it's frankly dangerous. And, and we saw that, you know, when, when we had the, you know, the monsoons and some of the flooding over the last few weeks, it's a dangerous place for people to be. You know, I, I'm, I'm by, you know, one of the drugstores at Millan University and I walk down there and, and that's sort of a constant challenge. You know, we see, we get a lot of the emails about Papago Park and a lot of the neighborhood parks, and those are challenges as well. So I would agree with, you know, with, with the sentiment that council expressed. It's not just simply about, you know, throwing money at a problem. It's about, you know, coming up with strategies and solutions that would move the needle. But I agree with Councilmember Arredondo Savage to say, you know, we'll have to go into this conversation with our eyes wide open to understand. You know, if, you know, Naomi and her team come back with a plan that says, you know, council, I can make this happen. I can really make things change in a real way over the next six to 12 months, but it's going to cost you money. That, that I agree with Councilmember Arredondo Savage. We're going to have to have that conversation with an open mind and with very open eyes, understanding that if that's where we're choosing to spend our priorities and our money, then that's what we're going to have to do. But, but just on a personal level, I mean, I think this is a critical issue and it's something that I really do believe, I, I mentioned this once before, when we started, what, what's given me the confidence to believe that, you know, I know that, you know, our team in collaboration with a lot of our nonprofit partners can get this done, is, you know, once again, when I first started, you know, and I know Councilmember Garland as well, on council back in July of 2020, Sixth Street Park, at that point, right in front of Tempe City Hall, had kind of become a permanent encampment. And it was once the council made the decision collectively to spend the $450,000 to secure the additional 45 motel rooms on Apache Boulevard and really kind of asked staff to direct resources to Sixth Street Park. Within two to three weeks, it was entirely different. We had rapidly rehoused people. There were no longer people sleeping in the park, under benches and on the ground. And I just saw how quickly our team with the direction and the resources was able to turn that situation around for so many people who are so incredibly vulnerable. And so I, I, I believe that our team has the expertise and to get this done, if we provide them the resources with which to get it done. And that's again, that's not saying we have to go it alone. We need our partners in Phoenix and Mesa and Scottsdale to really join us in the county to get something done on this issue. But at the same time, I'm confident, you know, with those partners, you know, both, you know, municipal and nonprofit and with the expertise our team has, if we put forward a comprehensive plan that really seeks to move the needle and we're willing to dedicate the resources, we can get something done quickly. So that's, that's my comment on my end. Does anyone else have anything else on their end before we close?
Mayor Woods, it's Naomi.
Yes.
Quickly, just a couple of comments. We definitely agree that partnership is very important, regional partners, our surrounding cities, and also our nonprofits and our faith-based groups. We are forever appreciative of those nonprofits such as the Ares Foundation and TCAA. And then also just other partners that we are funding or nonprofit partners coming in through agency review and those that even aren't in agency review. We are starting up our homeless coalition meetings again. We have put them on hiatus with COVID, but those are beginning September 15th. So we will have at the table those nonprofit partners or faith-based groups and other community partners to be involved in the discussions that we have as far as where we go and what our next steps will be to continue to end homelessness very briefly in one time. So that's happening as well as we're very appreciative of the approval of the aggregate shelter, the increase there of $450,000 that came through the last supplemental. TCAA will be able to expand their beds by 30. And then the East Valley Men's newly, they're going to expand, expand their beds by 32. So that's an additional 62 and then also the approval of the runway. That's a huge accomplishment to be able to have beds and shelter to move people off the street into, into those safe living environments. So we're very grateful for that. So I think that's a very huge step for the city of Tempe with those funds going toward those endeavors. So we will definitely come back with a plan and a structure for you as far as strategies, is from what I'm hearing, that you would like to see. And also just, we're aware of also the piece about enforcement. And those are continuing conversations within our homeless task force. So very productive and very positive conversations, knowing that we do not want to criminalize homelessness. So we're being very intentional and thoughtful about how we approach that issue.
Sounds good. Thank you, Naomi. Councilmember Garland.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to my council colleagues for the consensus. And thank you again to Naomi and Paul for all that you guys do with your team. You guys are absolutely amazing and make me so proud. I also wanted to say on the side to Vice Mayor Keating, on Tuesday, last Tuesday, when Mayor Woods and Councilmember QB and I were at the dedication of Jenny's trailer, there was a gentleman that spoke there who was part of the Tempe Works program and, and had mentioned that and told us a little bit about that. And it was really wonderful to hear from him. And I just want to say thank you so much to you for doing that program started. I, I think with the new person coming in, in, that's really going to make a difference. And I really want to see that, that program expand and do more. So thank you very much, Vice Mayor Keating.
All right. I really appreciate it. Excellent. Thank you so much, Councilmember Garland. Anyone else? Any comments or further comments or questions on item three? All right, hearing none. Naomi, you've got your consensus to come back and bring forward a plan to the council for our consideration.
Thank you. Thank you all for your support.
Thank you. So next up, we have the last item. It's, I know this retreat was scheduled till five o'clock and it's 5:01. So we've got one last item here, constituent response and tracking. And I'm going to bring Keeley back up, our chief of staff, to see, is this something that we want to, you know, go forward with today? I don't know. I want to be respectful of people's time. If there are councilmembers that had kind of a hard stop at five o'clock, you know, this is an item Keeley and I talked about that might be able to be delayed to a future work study. But if people are here and just want to go forward and do it now, we can do that as well. So I just figured I want to kind of ask the group before Keeley launches into the presentation. Well, I, I will, I will say this. I'm, I'm, I'm personally fine with delaying the item to a future work study, especially since we've talked about scheduling another work study within the next couple of weeks. But I see Councilmember Arredondo Savage. I will go to her.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be on babysitting duty here in a little bit. So it's going to take, it could get really ugly, but I'd prefer we postpone it if we can. That's my two cents.
Thank you, Councilmember. Babysitting duty trumps, you know, constituent response to tracking. It's a, it's a much more important job. Councilmember Garland.
I was going to say that the silence and response could just be the fact that people have already checked out at five o'clock. So I'm good with, with moving it to a different time. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Anyone else want to weigh in?
Yeah, I'd like to weigh in. I, you know, yeah, people are checking out. I get it. But we're probably having another work study added to the calendar. Can we put it on that one? Because honestly, it's been two years, two years of trying to get a system, a better system in place. And I would really like to see progress. So, I mean, we do have a work study that's being created, right? A different.
Works. Yes. I actually got an email from Carla today that I need to respond to. But yes, we're working on creating another one within the next, I would say, two, three weeks.
That sounds good then.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Councilmember QB. Absolutely, I agree. I mean, we, I know this has been discussed for quite some time and it deserves to get a full hearing. Anyway, so it sounds like we've got consensus to postpone this item. So Keeley, it looks like we may have got you off the hook for the last item here on the agenda.
Okay, no problem.
Okay.
All right, everyone. With that said, it is 5:03 and that is the end of our agenda. Just wanted to thank council and staff, of course, for all the presentations, the great conversation. And thank you to everyone at home for tuning in and watching this with us. So just wanted to say thank you so much and have a wonderful weekend. And please make sure, once again, if you can join us tomorrow morning at the Tempe Healing Field at 5:30 tomorrow morning, we would love to have you. So please make sure if you can make the time, please, please be there with us. And with that, the meeting, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor. Nice job.
Thank you.